Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. It's seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for this hour on May 22, 2017. As always, we'll begin our meeting with a salute to our American flag, and I would ask that you all please rise and join Councillor Abba Doyle in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll note for the record that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by Deputy City Clerk Stacy Anders, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Councillor Doyle?
Here.
Councillor Bowles?
Here.
Councillor Littman?
Present.
Councillor Baer?
Present.
Councillor Hamel?
Here.
Councillor Baldwin?
Here.
Presiding Mayor Edward Angler.
Present. With the record show that all six councillors are present for tonight's meeting and that a quorum has been established, we will also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight also by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Donna Woodham. First thing I have here tonight is Terms of Business is a joyous moment really for all of us, and that is a proclamation to read, so I'm going to come around. And we all know that our very own Pleasant Street Elementary School has been named as the New Hampshire Elementary School of the Year. And we're here tonight to start off our meeting with a salute to the faculty, staff, and students of that school, excuse me, for that amazing achievement for which we are all very proud. I've had personally the opportunity since I've been Mayor several times to visit the school, have been asked to visit classrooms at the school, and have always been impressed by what I've found. And I can repeat one little anecdote for you tonight that I found especially interesting. Just a few weeks ago, I visited with a couple of third grade classes at Pleasant Street Elementary School. And so they were all gathered in one room, and they had all been told to have questions ready to ask the Mayor and whatnot. And some of them were the normal questions that you might get, you know, how hard is your job, and how many hours do you spend a week at it and whatnot. But a lot of the questions were significantly more unusual than that, and to point out perhaps in my mind, not surprisingly, what an unusual school Pleasant Street Elementary School is. And one in particular that I remember, was a little boy raised his hand, third grader obviously, and in the midst of a lot of questions about the Mayor's office and that, and he looked at me and he said, "How many houseplants do you have?" And then he asked, he wanted to know the names of them. And so I knew the answer to the first question was four, but I had no idea what the answer to any of the other questions was. And I wanted to say to him that he should be thankful that I hadn't killed any of them yet, practically a miracle in itself. But what an unusual question to come from a third grader to ask the Mayor, and very interesting and penetrating. And anyway, just a little anecdote to, stuck in my mind about what an unusual student population there we have there. And we are all, obviously, so very proud of all of you in the entire school district, but in particular this year with Principal Levesque and the faculty, and I said staff and students of Pleasant Street Elementary School. So I know there are a lot of you here tonight that we can't quite accommodate everybody up here connected to the school tonight, but I had asked earlier today for the Principal to select, or someone in the office to select a representative group to represent the school tonight. So what I'd like to do is introduce these people one by one and have them join me here behind the microphone. We'll get a group picture, and then I'd like to give the council an opportunity to congratulate each and one of, every one of you individually. So we'll start, we'll leave the Principal till last. We'll have a big buildup to Principal Levesque here. I'll start with Linda Thanis, kindergarten teacher. Cory Smith, also a kindergarten teacher. That's four of them. Congratulations. Bonnie Weston, second grade teacher. Ellen Ward, I know Ellen, third grade teacher.
Nice to see you again.
Courtney Layton, also a third grade teacher. Sorry, we don't have enough seats here. We're beyond capacity tonight. Courtney, congratulations. Nice to see you. Lisa Moore, fifth grade teacher. Lisa, congratulations. Sarah Gagnon, fourth grade teacher. Sarah, congratulations. Kristy Labonte, special education teacher. I'd like to know how a male got to be principal of this school. That's one question I have. And Gail Born, the curriculum director for Pleasant Street Elementary School. And last but certainly not least, to add a little gender balance to our group up here tonight in addition to the Mayor, none other than the Principal David Levesque. All right, I'm going to read this proclamation, and then we'll get a picture taken here. "Thank you for joining us, by the way, this evening in representing your school and all the faculty and students of PSS. Whereas the citizens of Laconia are extremely fortunate to live in a community that values education with schools that consistently meet and exceed the needs of all students. Ours is a community where students from pre-kindergarten through 12th grade are celebrated for who they are. They are encouraged, challenged, motivated, and nurtured by a team of school administrators, teachers, and a staff on a daily basis. And whereas this year, our own Pleasant Street Elementary School has received the outstanding honor of being named the state of New Hampshire's Elementary School of Excellence in a reward received from the Excellence in Education Initiative of group comprised of educators and community members from around the state. And whereas in awarding this honor, the Board of Directors of the Excellence in Education Initiative found that Pleasant Street School's students demonstrate a sense of pride in their school and a strong connection to their community. Each student is the recipient of a level of caring, personalized education, innovation, and inspiration that makes them feel they belong to something bigger than their school community. Now therefore, please join me in recognizing and honoring Pleasant Street School for being named the 2017 Elementary School of Excellence in the state of New Hampshire and for the school's administration, staff, and students for their commitment to education in the city of Laconia. Signed, Edward J. Angler, Mayor of Laconia." Why don't we set this aside for a second, and we'll get closer. Some of you who are vertically challenged can get toward the front. Come on, don't be shy. Come on, in front here, don't get towards the back. There we go. Oh, come on, you're not going to get seen. Okay, thank you. All right, before you go, I'm going to ask Principal Levesque to come up here, please, and we're going to form a single file snake here, if you will, and follow him, okay? So I'm going to ask that you start with Stacy Anders here, and go around the table and allow these good people to congratulate her personally.
Congratulations. Very proud of you. Congratulations. Very proud of you. Nice to see you here.
Thanks for coming. Great job. Nice to see you. Nice to see you.
Guys, rock. Yeah. You can't go to Pleasant Street School without my brother.
Congratulations. Hey, good to see you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good, that was very good.
Congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you. She was doing awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's you going, doesn't it?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Your hair looks marvelous.
It is. My brother is so proud of you.
I'm sorry. Don't worry. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you again all for honoring us with your presence this evening, and congratulations again to each and every one of you. Thank you for coming. Before I get to the acceptance of minutes and other regular business, I'm going to note for the record here, since we have a record turnout of people in our audience tonight, I'm suspecting that many of you are here with regard to the first item under new business on tonight's agenda, which is a request to approve a tentative agreement between the School Board and the Laconia Education Association. Again, that is on our agenda as the first item under new business. We do have some things to take care of before we get there. And I will also note that we have two, we will have shortly two public speaking opportunities. The first of which will be traditionally for those people who might want to address the council about a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. And then a few steps down in the agenda, before we get to new business, there will be a second opportunity, and that's the appropriate time for someone who wishes to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda. So if there's anybody in our audience tonight who wishes to address the council on the matter of the tentative agreement with the Laconia Education Association, that opportunity will come when we get to citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items, okay? All right, first order of regular business is minutes. Before the council tonight are the minutes from our meeting on May 10. Those minutes were distributed to the council, I'm sorry, May 8. Those minutes were distributed two days later on May 10. No corrections or changes were received at the Clerk's office, so unless there is any changes now from the council, I'm going to declare that the minutes to our meeting on May 8, 2017 have been accepted as submitted by the City Clerk. Consent and action calendar. We have two requests tonight on the consent and action calendar, referring you to page 15 of your booklet. The first one is a request to approve the use of property located at Five Hilliard Road as a temporary parking lot during Motorcycle Week 2017. The reason this is before us tonight is because the owner of the property missed the usual deadline. As I understand it, what's being asked for here is a repeat of what's been asked in the past and nothing new, so this is a formality. They simply missed the deadline, and if you miss the deadline, it has to go to the council for approval. So a motion would be in order to approve the request to approve the use of property located at Five Hilliard Road as a temporary parking lot during Motorcycle Week 2017. Councillor Bullock makes that motion. Councillor Doyle seconds it. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. I have six votes in affirmative that motion carries. Our second item, I'm going to get through all the maps here, is on page 20. This is with regard to the temporary traffic order for Motorcycle Week. As I understand it, there are no changes to the temporary traffic pattern this year, and that's why it's on the consent and action calendar, so a motion would be in order to approve temporary traffic order 2017-7, Laconia Motorcycle Week 2017 as presented. Motion by Councillor Doyle, seconded by Councillor Bullock. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. I have six votes in affirmative that motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're all ready to citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate time for anyone in our audience tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone who meets that description here tonight? Nope, nobody stirring in the back there?
We'll see anybody.
Okay, we'll move on then. Thank you. We have no interviews tonight, no communications, no public hearings, no presentations, so we're already down to the Mayor's report. And I want to mention a couple little things and then make a statement. One is to call everyone's attention to the fact that Monday is Memorial Day, and we will have our traditional Memorial Day parade and ceremony in Laconia starting at 10:00 a.m., with the parade stepping off from Wyatt Park at 10:00 a.m. and coming up Main Street, stopping briefly at the bridge so we can honor the Naval and Coast Guard casualties and veterans, and then proceeding up to Veterans Square, Veterans Park at Veterans Square for the traditional Memorial Day ceremony. And that's always well attended in this city, and I would invite very much any of you who have not been to that, had the pleasure of attending that solemn ceremony, to do so. It is quite dramatic and I think something not to be missed at some time in one's life, especially for those of us who have, not too many of us have left who have known World War personally. Other wars certainly, and we've had a lot of veterans and whatnot, but this is the time of, this is the, this is the day, obviously, that we pause to remember and appreciate all of our war debt. And all of the war memorials in the city are located around the square there, so it lists not only all the people who have served in the major wars in our time since the beginning of the 20th century, but also the people who died. Second thing is, I guess I need to confirm this with the City Manager, is the Lakeside, we're in the last week for the Lakeside Avenue project, and we have a ribbon cutting schedule. Is that still on?
That is still on.
Pace Thursday at 2:00, I believe. I hope everybody on the council can make that to have a little official grand opening, if you will, of the Lakeside Avenue beautification project. So that's Thursday at 2:00. Last thing I'd like to say briefly is addressing the primary issue before us tonight in a non-technical sense, meaning not addressing specifically the whys and wherefores and whatnots of the proposal that's before us tonight as far as the teacher's contract is concerned. But I want to make a personal observation to everyone in our audience tonight and to the people who are joining us and will be joining us via the broadcast of this meeting, that the thought very much occurs to me that I know many of the people who are in this room tonight, both people who are sitting around this table up at the front here and who are in our audience tonight. And I can say almost probably without exception, without exception of the people that I know, and I know that there are some of you who I don't know personally, that there's not a person in this room who hasn't, through person or family, and usually both, exhibited a deep commitment to an appreciation of education. We can't say that of everybody. We know that. But if we took our community as a whole, and it were possible to divide it up, I don't know what that percentage would be, to divide it up between people who personally and through their family have that dedication, appreciation of education in two groups, one who have it and one who don't have it, everybody in this room tonight, everybody, I firmly believe would be on the same side. So I think we need to keep that in mind, and both in terms of the substance of the discussion and the tone of the discussion tonight and as we approach the budget deliberations throughout the rest of the... So having said that, and been on my high horse for a minute, I'll move on to our next order of business, and that is to committee reports. I don't believe we have any committee business tonight. Am I missing something? Any liaisons on reports tonight? I think we have our first meeting of the Joint Planning Board, School Board, Master Plan Committee tomorrow, correct, in this room?
Not School Board, Planning Board and Council.
Planning Board and Council.
Tomorrow here at 3:00.
At 3:00?
Yes.
Okay.
Public hearing tomorrow night, too, David? Public hearing tomorrow night for the Planning Board?
Yes. No.
On what?
Next Planning Board meeting is the public hearing.
That'd be in June.
On that.
You've already had your meeting for May, all right?
Right, we've had our meeting for May, so the first Tuesday in June will be the meeting for the hearing on the excessive reuses. I guess I'll, I think I already reported on this, but I'll report again that the Planning Board recommended the change. You know, me and this mic just don't get along.
Rename it.
Recommended the change that the council wanted, which relates to nightclubs, so that's, everything else stays the same. We'll have a hearing on that. It'll come back here. I'll recommend again that we have another public hearing, and that'll be that.
Okay, any other liaison reports?
How could I get time?
All right, and quick, this may be a record that we've gotten this far already. We're all ready to citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. Is there anyone in our audience tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda? This would not include official presentations, which I believe we'll have one from the School Board. Yes, please come forward. So say this to all of you, please use the microphones over here. The closer you can get to them, the better, so we can all hear you, and please identify yourself and your address, not by street name, number, but at least by where in Laconia you live, whatever, so we can have, the clerk can have that for the record.
Well, good evening. I'm Amanda O'Reardon-Youssef, and I live on Juliette Street in Laconia. I've taught fourth grade in Laconia for 15 years. Mr. Bullock, I am getting to know your granddaughter, Callie, and she is quite a blossoming, talented poet. It's been a wonderful year with her. I'm here to share my perspective with you, not only as an experienced educator in Laconia, but as a citizen of this great community. My family is grounded in this place. My parents graduated from LHS in 1980, and I was born the same year. My sister and I are both LHS graduates, and we both married Laconia graduates as well. Our uncle was a past Laconia police chief, and he now serves as our sheriff. My husband's family own businesses in the city and reside here as well. We have a lot invested in our beloved Laconia. Thank you all for your investment in this city. We gather tonight because of common interests. How can we make Laconia the best place it can be? I've never felt so committed and passionate about this exact question as I do at this point. You see, my husband and I kissed our two baby girls goodnight before we came here. Gabrielle's two and Genevieve is a four-year-old word nerd, like her parents. Just this morning, she used the words saturated and cyclical in the correct context. She can't wait to start kindergarten in Laconia in 2018. We also have been confident and proud of having our children immersed in the rich district of Laconia. However, as parents, we're gravely concerned with the future of Laconia schools. As a teacher, I can share with you that I've sacrificed tens of thousands of dollars during times our contracts were frozen to save other teachers' positions, because that's what is best for our students. I am appalled when I research other districts and see what I would be making had I not made the decision to come back and continue to contribute to the city that I love. But this isn't about me, and it's not about my particular salary. This isn't what troubles me the most, actually. Come June 23, I am saying goodbye to five Elm Street School coworkers. That's exactly one-third of our classroom teachers. That's five educators that I was vying for my little word nerds to have. You've probably seen Andrew Mercer's name splashed all over our newspapers. He is another homegrown Laconia teacher who has come back to sow the seeds of our land. He has fostered a passion for our city within our youngsters through building bridges between our youth and Laconia's histories, geography, and local businesses. Plymouth, a salary superior district, will be lucky to have him. Laconia, this is a huge loss. You've read about Tate Aldridge, New Hampshire's Teacher of the Year, another homegrown Laconia boy. Like many others, he came back to invest in the Laconia that has given so much to him. We must say goodbye to him as well. Laconia, this is a huge loss. The people I work alongside that have been immersed in Laconia's professional development, that have grown in talents and expertise, are jumping ship. We're losing some of our best talents to districts that aren't afraid to invest in a good thing. How many losses can our city afford? As a citizen, I want the Aldriges and the Mercers to be teaching my children. I want them to instill in them the same values and love of learning that Laconia instilled in me and my parents before me. We need our teachers to stay. What we don't need is for Laconia to become a training ground, a place for new teachers to gain some experience before leaving for a higher-paying district. That's not what is good for our children. We want Laconia's youth to come back as adults to raise their own families right here in Laconia. We want young families to come and raise their children alongside us. If our education system is failing, we won't have new families moving in. In fact, we will have these families jumping ship, too, vying for a different school district to live in, one where turnover is the exception and not the rule. I speak of this with certainty. My family has outgrown our small house on Juliette Street, and we're soon putting our house on the market. It's long been our plan to relocate to a larger house right in the city we grew up in, in the town that we love so very much. But we're no longer sure that's the best option for our children. We see the families around us struggling with the same question. We've seen some of them leave. If things don't change, we think the needs of our two little girls may be better served in a city where the school district can retain their staff and where reduction of force does not threaten much-needed positions. We yearn to stay in Laconia, and we hope for some clarity in our decision based on how you handle your decision. So how can we make the best, how can we make Laconia the best that it can be? It goes beyond having an appreciation for education. How can we make Laconia the best it can be? We need to take action. We invest in the people that are investing in Laconia. As a resident, the benefits of lifting the tax cap is an investment in our city's future that far exceeds the few dollars I'm saving with it. Please choose to help families like mine to continue to live, love, and invest in the city of Laconia.
Hey, anybody want to follow that? There's a brave soul.
Now I know what it feels like to be, okay, Richard Hodgman, 87 Marl Street. I feel like a piece of red meat that's been thrown into a lion cage because I see all these beautiful teachers here that have done a great job. But on the other hand, I've lived here since 1960, worked here since 1960, and believe me, it's getting tougher and tougher. No reasons, I'm Social Security. No raises on Social Security whatsoever. Well, I take that back. I did get a raise, but I have to pay more for Medicare Part B. I just got a letter from my insurance company for my supplement insurance, which is going to cost me another $30 a month, and I guess I'm going to be paying more to register my car. I hope that the council here, everybody, remembers that there are an awful lot of older people here that really, really can't afford some big, big changes. I'll go along with it. Could you guys give me that same raise? I'd appreciate that. If you guys can do something to give me the same raise or one similar to them, I'd be all for it. As far as the quality of teachers, we've got great teachers here as it is, but in my opinion, and it's only an opinion again, you're not going to be bringing people in here because you have teachers that you're paying high, high wages for. I really don't know where I go from here as far as trying to pay the bill. And I'd like to say a special thanks to Brenda Beer because, as people know, she writes a column every once in a while, and I have to agree. I was here when the town, the city actually, wanted to do urban renewal, and we were told, oh, get these new buildings in here, and that's going to lower your taxes. Well, believe me, again, I've been here since paying taxes since 1960, and I have never seen my tax bill go down. Everything's going up, the water's going up, food is going up, public service, it doesn't matter. I had to cut some of my services in regards to MetroCast. Again, all you teachers, I think you're doing a great job, but I wish you could get a raise, but unfortunately, I have to address the group here to say that I hope that you can work something out where maybe you can do something, and especially not do away with the tax cap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nick Reska, Pine Street, Laconia. I don't work for the Laconia School District, but I am housed at Laconia Middle School. I work for New Hampshire Jobs for America's Graduates, and unfortunately, because of the tax cap, my program has been cut at the middle school. I am the only New Hampshire Jobs for America's Graduates Middle School Youth Specialist in the state, and now my 38 kids that I service on a daily basis do not have JAG. It's really...I mean, I've worked in three districts across the Lakes Region. Laconia, to me, I was a Guilford boy growing up, but it's something about the atmosphere, the team, it's just so great. In my two short years with JAG, I was named New Hampshire Outstanding Specialist, and I was also one of 40 specialists from across the country. We have over 250 specialists. I was a High Performer Award winner, and that was all in my first year, and now I have to walk away from it. I'm actually fortunate that I received employment down in Florida, so off I go, but I really wish, and like I said to all of my interviewers...or, excuse me, interviewees, I wish that I wasn't sitting in front of them. I wish that I could continue to grow my kids and make them love the place that they live in. And I just want you to think about those 38 that next year, who knows where they'll be. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Who's next? Please get right up to the microphone.
My name is Marjorie Wilkinson. Forty years ago, my husband and I returned to Laconia. We had been away for about 10 years, but we had both gone through the Laconia school system. We had no hesitation about moving to Laconia. We knew the schools were great. We knew they offered a good education. We were ready for our children to receive the same, and they did. But as the years passed, somehow things began to change. There was a cultural change, and it's concerning. And so what I'm seeing now at this point in time, and I believe everyone in this room does value education, I don't...you know, I know you've done your best, and I think under the tax cap, many things have been done, but I think you as council members, you make decisions, and you make decisions that impact the culture, the environment of our community. And right now, we're talking about education, and education is a system. It's a system like the fire department, like the police department, like the city works department, like the hospital. It is a system, but who makes up that system? It's people. And in order for you to offer a quality-run system, you have to have good people. You can't have our teachers leaving. Good teachers, our teachers that are here, and I've worked with them 12 years ago, they're great, and they care about all of our students, all of our students, those students who are on free and reduced. And I can tell you from personal experience that those free and reduced want a good education, too. They need that as probably more than others. They need good people to stay here and support them and foster their education and their dreams, dreams to go to college for a first time. I know a young lady who's going to do that. She will be the first one in her family. But they need that support from all the teachers. So what I ask is how do we...again, Mandy said it probably in better words than I, but what she said is, how do we continue and bring back and foster education in Laconia? And the reason I say that is because living in this community for the last 40 years, talking with friends, talking with people, business people, we are not attracting middle-income families to Laconia. They are choosing to move to other communities. They are the ones who could help lower taxes for our senior citizens by being here. So how do we do that? And I ask each council member to ask yourselves, how do we bring students like Tate back here to Laconia? And Andrew, you know, they're leaving. They're great teachers. We've seen both of them in the papers recently, and all the wonderful things that they're doing for the community, and they're no longer here. We have Mr. Tucker, who also left. Why? Because they have families to support, too, and they're going to communities who are supporting their personnel, the people who make up a system. What are each of you doing to make Laconia attractive to middle-income people? And what are you doing to support those people who are free and reduced? Free and reduced has increased rather than decreased with the tax cap. It's increased from about 40% 12 years ago to now 70%. So how is our tax cap helping those families? I think education offers them opportunities, and you need to be able to support that, and because of that, you need to be able to support the staff that is servicing education. Please, please, just...
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Hi, my name is Mark Kondedemitraki. I live on 8 Edgewater Ave, Laconia. I know you said you don't use numbers, but it's all public information anyways. So I've been known to be a little long-winded and detailed, so I brought prepared remarks to keep myself short and to the point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Obviously, education is one of the cornerstones of a community. With education, everything and anything is possible. As a business owner and a licensed professional, I understand firsthand the importance of education and investment in education. As most businesses in the state will tell you, access to an educated workforce is one of the biggest hindrances to expanding business currently. But we must not take these decisions lightly, and we have to take great care to understand how votes such as the ones tonight will affect us over the long term. And we must plan for the long term, not just one or two budget cycles. By having a consistent teacher and curriculum, it will benefit our children, it will benefit our community for generations. This is how we have to approach planning in this manner, by projecting what the results and benefits will be for 20 or 50 years, not for one or two. It would be very short-sighted to look at where we want our community to go and how we wish to shape it over a one or two budget cycle period. I, for one, have been working very hard to rehab the image of the downtown and better my property that I own for my community, and to help attract and retain the best and the brightest of the next generation to the city. But I can't do it alone. The term "it takes a village" applies to so many different situations and scenarios, and it certainly applies here. As a village, as a community, we need to understand that we are all in this together, and that we're all going to benefit from the success together, and we're all going to suffer from the failure together. I fully support what the School Board has proposed, and I hope you'll see the benefit in the long term of this proposal. And just briefly, as an aside, to address what the gentleman who was concerned about the cost of increases on his fixed income was. He associated a specific cost for action for what we're going to do and what we would like. But ask yourselves, what is the cost of inaction? So thank you very much.
See a hand there in the back row?
Hi, Lindsay Packer, 24, on Washington Street. I grew up here on Pine Street, went to Woodland Heights, went to Laconia Middle School, back when it was Memorial Middle School, and the high school, and I was always thinking, what do I want to do? I want to teach, and I want to end up back at Woodland Heights, and I did that. That was my dream. But now my husband's here with me. We met at Laconia High School as well, and we just bought a house, and we're already thinking, did we make the right call? I graduated from Plymouth. This is my second year, and there are several other teachers who are in their second year. Two of them are leaving, and I've been debating, should I stay here? Because I'm very committed. I've been here since I was born. Or should I go with them? So I just want that to be something that we're thinking about from the new teacher's point of view. We've heard from some people who have been here a long time. I haven't. So now I'm at that point where I'm at first-year pay. Do I stay here and stay at that? Or do we make the change so I can? Or do I leave and go somewhere else? So just from a new teacher's point of view, that's where I'm at, and that's it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Who's next? I see a gentleman moving here.
Hello, my name's Jonathan Muller. 1200 Old North Main Street, Laconia. My wife has grown up here. I have two...
Can you get closer to the microphone, please?
Okay, is that better? All right. We have both grown up here, and we've seen the city change quite significantly since we were here. And, you know, there's a lot of dollar stores, things of that nature, and, you know, I really think that the City Council and the Planning Board has not looked at the city overall and had a good plan. I think you guys have allowed too much workforce housing in the sense of it drains on the School Boards and so forth. But I think we just need to look at getting rid of the tax cap and allowing the teachers to have their raises and move forward, and look at it overall. So I'm for the teachers.
All right, thank you.
Lisa Moore, 42 Valley Street in Lakeport. I support education. My mother was a teacher, and several times in my career, I've been associated with working with teachers. But I also have to applaud the gentleman from Marl Street who stood up and said, on a fixed income, I've been here since 1960. And not that I don't support teachers getting raises and having them recognized for good quality work, but I think it's a much broader issue because people are talking about, oh, you need to attract families, you need to attract families. I hate to tell you this, but if you're just attracting families, you're costing yourself money, because residents cost a community money. Businesses are attracting...they get more tax dollars into the community. Families alone, because of the services they require, will cost us money. So I'm not saying we shouldn't attract families, but I think we need to look at it as a broader picture. It has to be a balanced growth. We do need to address our education, but you also need to look at the people who maybe were born and raised here, who never had children, but still live in their community and are struggling to stay in this community. They're giving to the community, but, you know, they're not going to benefit necessarily from educating other people's children. And that sounds cruel, but it's the truth, you know? They're not putting children into the school system, and so they're just paying out. And there are retired people who've moved here who've been a great asset to this community. But what benefit are they getting from the education system? In some cases, you can make an argument, yes, they are, when our kids are educated, everybody benefits, but it's a much bigger picture than just, you know, educate our kids, and our taxes will be wonderful and everything will fall into place. Education is just one piece of it, and it's a very emotional issue, and I do support teachers, and I do support education. As I said, my mom was a teacher, and I understand that aspect of it, but it can't...you can't let the emotion of the argument really be the swaying factor. It has to be a broader scope than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We got...I'll have you wait a second.
Steve Bogert, South End of Laconia. I've lived here for about 16 years. I've had two kids go through the school system, one graduate college with a tremendous amount of college debt and whatnot. I am a homeowner, okay? I work. Proud of my job. I work hard, okay? And I also have to live within a budget. By the way, I am in support of the contract as far as them getting a raise and stuff like that. What I'm sorrowed is, is that the School Board did not do their fiduciary jobs in bringing this in within the confines of their budget. Instead, they chose to toss it into your laps and say, you guys are the bad guys because we don't want to do our job. And I think that's unfair. I think it's unfair that the School Board turned around and starts to split the community because, once again, they did not want to live within the confines of their budgets. I live in my... I live in my budget, and every time something goes up, Lord knows, everything goes up, I have to make choices on what I have to give up in order to pay for this. They say, oh, the tax cap. The tax cap was put in place as a red light, so it makes people come out and discuss when we have exceeded the financial numbers that are available to be dealt with. Okay? So now, the school board once again, and I blame this on the school board, that we're all sitting here tonight, because if they would have done their jobs, a lot of this wouldn't have been happening, you would have had a contract, boom, and things would keep right on going. But no, we're going to have unhappy people because in this type of situation, as the mayor said, everybody wants to be happy. It's not going to be happy because there's people that's going to have to give up in order for other people to have. And some of those people that give up, I work, I don't see retirement coming. God bless those who are retired. I have to work to continue to pay for my house that I love dearly, but every time my taxes go up, I have to give up something else in order to continue to pay. Sell the house? Well, that's a good answer. But every time the taxes go up, it takes another person out of the market who could afford to buy the house. Because as your taxes go up, your escrow goes up, the bank's going to look at it, and they're going to say, well, you can't afford that because your taxes and this, that, and the other is up this much, so you got to make this much. So bam, you're losing what they call that middle class, I'll call it the working class left that can afford to buy a house. So these are serious, serious questions. It's not just necessarily, oh, I get a contract and that's the way it is. They're all, I think everybody deserves a raise, but that's not reality. I want them to have a raise, but it should be done within the confines of the money allocated to the school. And if they have to go figure out a way, I work in business, business goes up, business goes down. When business goes down, they have to make hard choices, and sometimes there's people that don't like those hard choices, and then you get to go find new adventures in life. There are people in business who don't like their jobs, they go find new jobs. And I was always told that money's not a motivator, okay? That's neither here nor there. But remember, the school board should have to live in the confines of their financial money, the budgets that were provided to them by the taxpayers, okay? And unfortunately, the only people this is going to cost are the people who own property. Doesn't affect anybody else in the city. So if you're not a homeowner, yeah, who cares? Override the tax cap, doesn't affect me. But every time that tax cap, the first time the tax cap is overridden, that becomes easier and easier and easier. And it's there for a reason. It's to protect the rest of us who work for a living. So I say yes on a contract, but do not override the tax cap. The school board must live within their financial responsibility like everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, gentleman in the blue shirt was next. There we go.
Aaron Jones, Holman Street, Laconia. I've heard a lot of discussion tonight about questioning the direction that the town and city is going in and decisions that have been made over the years, and I'm no expert on those. I consider myself to be a working-class parent of kids in the school district and wanting to be more informed. I've become very informed about the decisions that the school board has made over the past decade or so, and I'd like to speak on behalf of them tonight and say that I think they've acted very responsibly, especially in this situation. You can all think of the decades and situations where people have had problems with the way that the school district has allocated funds and chose to use taxpayer dollars. To my knowledge, this school board has streamlined the school district and has made very difficult decisions to eliminate positions, trying to maintain as much staff as possible to run one of the best school districts in the state. And I think that they have put forth a responsible contract to level the playing field, to try to compete in the market of education. Because as you've seen and you know, teachers are not staying in this district. In the world of education, educators are sort of free agents for the first five to six years, and then after that, they kind of price themselves out of the market. Myself, being an educator in a different community, have longed to come back to Laconia because I envy the way that the school district operates, the support that they get from the community for the most part, and the way that they make their children successful, all kids. As I said, it is the envy of the Lakes Region for sure. So I'd like to speak on behalf of the school board and the tough decisions they have made. And the tax cap, you know, to my knowledge, does have a purpose, but I think that there's also responsibility that we all have to analyze, you know, when is enough enough? What needs to be, you know, where can changes be made to accommodate unforeseen costs? I don't have that answer, and I think we're all here to ask if you do. Because when the economy doesn't grow, we can't just keep cutting everywhere. So I guess I'm just here to ask, what's the next step? That's all I have to say.
Keith Noes, 41 Havenwood Drive, Laconia. Wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I'm going to piggyback on what Aaron said and what Mark said and many other people tonight. I've grown up in Laconia, 38 years, been here my whole life, born here, raised here, went through all the schools, Pleasant Street, very proud of them. Very, very proud. Three of my four children attend Pleasant Street, and I'm proud that they attend that school. But I also have concerns. The school district itself, it's changed tremendously even the last 10 years. I myself, as an educator, I've been in the schools, I volunteered while I was in college in Jim Tracy's fifth grade room, and even during that time, it just, I worry that the people that we're attracting to this town are just, they're not the families that we want here. When, somebody said earlier tonight that, you know, free and reduced rates have skyrocketed. I mean, I think Woodland Heights is upwards of 70% of their students are free and reduced. So I guess, who is the tax cap helping, is my question? Because it's not bringing in the families that are going to bring back our schools and bring in people that value education. My three girls, I've got one in fifth, two in third at Pleasant Street, they've lost three best friends to other districts. And it's because we have, and we do an awesome job, don't get me wrong, but it's a rough crowd, Laconia schools. You know, we have to support these people that are doing incredible things with the population that we have. When my first grader comes home to me, you know, and when she was in first grade and tells me, Dad, it was a great day. I say, yeah, what'd you do? Well, tells me some great things that happened, and then one thing, well, I ducked when a chair was thrown. I'm thinking, are you kidding me? But, so I think the tax cap is, again, something that we really need to consider maybe lifting it so that we can bring Laconia back to what it was. Because I, like Mandy was saying, I just bought my dream home a year ago here in Laconia, moved from Lincoln Street over to Havenwood, and we questioned, my wife and I, is this where we want to put our roots until retirement? And, you know, we, back and forth, back and forth, and I just hope that I made the right decision, but I think we have to invest in the kids, and that means investing in our teachers. And it's so expensive to keep retraining new teachers. So expensive. We can't afford to keep doing that. We've got to, like, appreciate and recognize what we have. Because we do have fantastic educators, and I hope that I did make the right decision in staying and not going where some of those other great families have gone. So that's my take on it.
See someone moving toward the back there. There we go.
Good evening. My name's Tina Woodbury, and I live on Taylor Street in Laconia. And I too wasn't planning on speaking. I grew up in Laconia, I graduated in 1981 with Donald Baldick, and I did move away and I came back to the area. I've taught in richer places, and I've certainly taught in districts where the state was first taking a look at how we funded education. A third grader, no matter which town they live in, goes to school thinking they deserve what any third grader in any town deserves. I really wanted to just say that watching, I've been in every school in our city over the last week, and all great places to be. The reason why I wanted to come up is I caution because almost like when a disagreement happens between two people at home and words are shared aloud in front of the students, I get a little concerned about what gets put in the paper tomorrow or the following days. The term "free and reduced" comes up a lot. We have students in the high school that will read the Daily Sun. Free and reduced lunch is not a dirty word. Those students come to school wanting to work just as hard and are not, they, I'm not putting it in the right terms, but I just would caution how we point the finger, the words that we use. Those teachers, those two words say a lot, depending on how they're used. It was mentioned that we, as teachers, have forgotten the town that we do live in and the finances. I see it, I see it every day. I live, I was taught, my dad, Mo Perry, some of you might know, I know what it means to live in a budget and live within your means, but the car did break. So my point in speaking was, keep the children in mind when you publicize this discussion. They are listening. Thank you.
My name is Steve Fay, 139 Franklin Street. The first thing I want to share with you is to say that there are retirees who do support education and do support spending more money to have education. So just because a few folks who are my age have spoken, you know, in their interest, which is fine, I don't want you to think that everyone who's a retiree feels the same way. My second, and I guess, well, and my second thought is that, you know, you might have the feeling we're really shot from the moon with proposals which they have made, but I talk to seventh, eighth graders. I know some of them very, very well. And if you think the top students in the middle school in the city don't notice what's going on, they do. And they have some disappointment in the quality of education. Well, we get as good as we can, but there's more that can be done, and these kids are watching it, and they talk to their parents or their grandparents. So, and thirdly, one gentleman spoke and said, well, the school board didn't do their job. I don't think the school board broke any laws, they broke no rules, they put together a strike proposal for your consideration, and I think that's your job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all, and I especially thank all of you for the, not only for the sincerity of your remarks, but also for the tone of the remarks, which I thought was excellent, and I appreciate that very much, I know the council does also. So thank you. We are on to the city manager's report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will be very brief tonight because I know most of these fine people didn't come here to hear me speak tonight.
That's a first.
We have the Laconia Projects Update is included in your agenda packet for this evening, as it always is for our second meeting of the month. Road projects, as the mayor's touched base on, Lakeside Avenue is going with a full head of steam. The weather over the last couple of the weeks hasn't been overly conducive to pouring concrete, but still great progress is being made down there. We're ready to celebrate the success of this project. There may be a few small punch list items, a couple of areas up towards the Weir's sign that aren't quite done for Thursday at 2:00 when we celebrate, but it's going to be a fantastic day. We hope everybody in the community can come down and join us. A great improvement with water, sewer, drainage, street paving, and a lot of amenities for that resort area, and it's a great end product that we'll all be able to celebrate and kick off the summer season at the Weirs. A lot of other activity will take place in the street paving projects once we get through this project, so right around July 1st, ties in with the fiscal year, as well as with the workload finishing up on Lakeside, so look for some additional streets as are listed here. The tennis courts over in Leather Park have been under construction, base course going down, the final course, line striping, we hope to have tennis available at the Leveque Park tennis courts, again, somewhere right around the 1st of July. We're moving forward on the drainage project with Messer Street. We have kind of a housekeeping item with the state on your agenda for this evening, but we're working with DOT in the rail in that section for a drainage project. We're also working on the Weir's Beach restoration with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and we're working on some of the little walk segments in the downtown with design and engineering so that those can be constructed in the near future. And again, remind everybody, Thursday at 2:00 for the ceremony in the Weirs. And with that, I'll stop it and take any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments for the manager? No? Wow, that's, we're setting records of all kinds. Okay, we're on to new business. And the first item of new business is a request to approve a tentative agreement between the Laconia School Board and the Laconia Education Association. I know Mr. Pearson is here tonight representing the school board, I don't know who else is involved in your presentation.
Just me?
Just you? Okay. Floor is all yours, sir.
Well, Stacey's getting my PowerPoint up. I did want to make a couple of comments that are not on the PowerPoint presentation that I had prepared. I think that tonight was actually excellent timing because you got to award Pleasant Street School the New Hampshire Elementary School of the Year, and I think that that's certainly a testament to the teachers that we have at Pleasant Street. You know, looking at many of those that stood up tonight, when my daughters attended Pleasant Street School, and my youngest daughter graduates from high school in two weeks, many of those same teachers were there. There has been a lot of consistency and a lot of longevity at Pleasant Street School, and I think that that continuity really contributes to the school environment that has led to the New Hampshire School of the Year. So thank you to Pleasant Street teachers and Mr. Leveque, because you've done an excellent job. I also wanted to mirror the comments that Mayor Engler had made earlier about everyone within this room valuing education. This council has shown that it values education over the years. You have supported the schools time and again through the building of the middle school, through renovations at the high school, through the Hewitt, and through other ways. I'm not pointing any fingers at any of you, and I'm not blaming any of you for the situation that we're in right now, so please do not think that I am. That is not the intent. You all care deeply about the city as we do. We may have different points of view as to what direction we should take and what actions we should take for that, but certainly- we should take for that, but certainly we, at least me personally, I do not believe that you don't support education. I think that you do, and I think you've shown that you do. Third, there's been some discussion or some comments about getting rid of the tax cap, and that is certainly not the intention of the referendum that you will be talking about here. We are not looking to put a referendum to get rid of the tax cap. That was never our proposal. What we will be proposing is that we put a floor on the cap that will allow us to fund this contract over the next four years if we approve it for this year. I think that the cap certainly has served a purpose within the city, but I also think that there is a need for some budget certainty and that a floor on that cap that we can budget around would be a prudent measure so that we don't have to be coming back here each year and having protracted budget fights over what we have in the past. Finally, with regard to Mr. Bogert's comment about the school board not doing its job, we cut over $1.7 million from our budget last year. The budget that you're going to see proposed on the 12th of June is going to include almost $900,000 in additional cuts. We sharpened our pencils. We've done our job. We've cut to the bone, and we would not be coming to the council asking for what we're going to be coming to the council to ask for if we had not done our job and cut everything that we could possibly cut to stay within the tax cap. With this teacher's contract, it's just not possible. So, we'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it with regard to the budget, but it is certainly not a result of us not doing our job. And if any of you have attended budget meetings, you would see the hard decisions that we have been making in order to live within our means, as Mr. Bogert said. Moving on to the presentation, sorry, Mr. Dale.
Sorry to interrupt you. During your presentation, there's a couple of things I'd like to have you clarify when you go through it.
Certainly.
A few of the things are, there's a graph here with, not a graph, but an outline of between $649,000 and $697,000 there, which are supposedly the increases. And then on another page, it says that you're requiring $750,000.
It's an average of 720,000. And that was in order to show you what the salary increases were. The cost pieces within that are the nets that are the increases in cost after we take into account the health insurance changes and the changes to the stipends.
So, the difference in the average between that block and the 750 is the insurance?
Insurance and the decreases in the stipend amounts.
So then, towards the end, it says that you would need $850,000 over the five years.
Correct.
So, I guess what I'm asking is, when you go through each one of those, could you explain it to us so it would be clearer?
Most definitely.
And then, over the five years that you're looking to exceed the tax cap, by what amount would that be? Not a percentage, an amount.
Well, we certainly can't tell you what that amount is because we don't know what CPI and what building permits are going to be, but what we would need would be $850,000 at a minimum for the next five years in order to avoid the termination provisions of the contract.
Put that in relative terms, meaning versus the 508 for this year?
Exactly. So, looking at it for this year, you know...
Your touch base this year is 508. What you're saying is you have to have at least 850 for each of the out years.
Exactly. Yep.
Just a follow-up on that, Mike, if I couldn't.
Certainly.
Thank you for taking time to lay this out for us and for conversations we've had. Just on the 850, that kind of connects to what you were describing as the floor. And in the context of assuming that floor was in place of 850, is it also the school board's perspective that 850, you're not going to come back another year later and say, "Well, this happened and that happened," that floor would be in place for the five-year period? Or is that a flexible concept?
Well, that floor would be there for the next five years because basically what we would be doing is calculating what that percentage needs to be as the tax cap floor. So, let's say, for example, that the tax cap number came in at 1.8% like it did this year. We would need roughly four, four and a quarter thereabouts in order to get to that number, as I understand it. So, that's what we would be looking at.
So, the other point is that, you know, it's been packaged as a relaxation of the tax cap, for lack of a better word. It isn't the school board's position that necessarily has to be the only way that we could get to that point. Is that correct?
Well, within the contract that's been approved, it is $850,000, and there does need to be both an override and a referendum. However...
So, I'd like to just probe that because, you know, I've been, I've done, I think, 12 budgets, maybe 13 budgets, and practiced finance my whole career, which has been a number of years. You know, I've been thinking about it, and, you know, I guess the issue is if we can find a way to work together like we did when we figured a way to build the middle school. I ran for office for the first time because the middle school project and the high school project hit the fan, so to speak. And, you know, I think we worked together to come up with some creative ways that none of us necessarily saw out of the box in terms of how to get to a reasonable point. And so, you know, in terms of my perspective on this is, I'm hearing you saying you need $850,000. I'm not necessarily accepting the fact that that has to be done through a tax cap override or a tax cap, however you characterize that.
Well, you know, the school board was the one that had asked for the termination provision that included both the override and the referendum because we felt that was the only way that we could get budget certainty to be able to ensure that we had the funds to be able to do that. So, and I can't speak for the LEA. However, it would seem to me that if we were able to come to some resolution whereby we could ensure that we had those increases over the next five years to support this contract and to fund it, that we would likely be able to get that approved both by the board and by the LEA.
Okay. So, let me, can I ask, I know we're off track here already, but since we're on the subject...
I'm at your service.
...I'd like to ask something that I'm not clear on myself, and that is that we know last year, for the current budget year that we're in, when the school district looked at projecting its, at that time, current costs and projects, not projects, programs, that you were going to be 1.5, 1.6, something like that, over budget?
Yep.
Not over budget, but yeah.
Over, always allowing it to the tax cap.
It would cost you $1.6 million to do the same thing this year that you did last year without making any additions or changes. And your cap space was 600,000 or, I don't remember what the number was, but it was whatever. So, the difference between those two numbers was what, in effect, you had to cut to get back down to your cap space. Okay. So, now, this year, you mentioned that that number was 900 and something thousand dollars. That's simply to extend the 2016-17 school budget without making any changes, that those base costs were going to inflate by nearly a million dollars.
No, no. Actually, we ended up cutting close to $900,000 from this budget because...
But if we've done nothing.
Well, if we did nothing, we would be about $250,000, $300,000 over. So, there would be a $300,000 cut likewise that would have needed to remain.
So, the number was, so if the cap space was 500 in round numbers, the total number was 750, 800, something like that?
Yep.
Okay. So, all right. So now, we have a budget proposal for next year, exclusive of the teacher's contract. Okay. So, I'm presuming that a year from now, you're going to tell us, just like the city manager would tell us, that to carry forward current employment levels and current, not counting contractual obligations now in terms of the contract, but just in terms of the other factors, cost of heating, running the buildings, et cetera, et cetera, health insurance, whatever, that number is not going to stay stable.
It's not, and we're going to need to look at making cuts each and every year moving forward.
That's my question.
That's the reality. This is not going to solve...
That's exactly what I'm trying to get an understanding of. It seems to me that if you're saying you only need a gross of 850, that that doesn't take into account what other cuts you might have to make in those four years, that 850's not going to cover it.
It's not. It's not.
That was the point I was trying to make, Mayor, that, you know, this is more than just a particular situation to solve. It's a larger situation, which, you know, all parts of city government have to look at different ways of accomplishing some things together so that we can deal with some of those unexpected costs. The other issues that we have to deal with is, you know, at a federal level, there could be a lot of different things coming down at us that we don't even, you know, know today in terms of the cuts that are, you know, for example, Medicaid and how that affects the schools, as an example, special education, those types of things. So, I mean, I think we're going to have to work together in a different way in order to survive the next number of years, and, you know, I guess I'm committed to, you know, personally, of, just as we did more than a decade ago, of working together differently that we can do that again, and we're going to need to, you know.
I agree, Counselor. I stood before you last June 27th, and I actually suggested that. I suggested that we convene the council, the school board, planning and other city departments to really talk about the future of the city and what are our priorities and how do we get there. I'm glad that we're getting to that point now, and I think that that needs to happen because this isn't the school board and the council, this isn't the school board of the city. You know, we do all have to work together, and certainly the school board would support that sort of a project moving forward.
And I think it's more than just where we want to go, but how do we work through where we are? Because I think both things have to be dealt with, and, you know, as I think I've mentioned to you, is I understand the bright lines of what the school board's authority is and what our role is in this, but I do think we can learn from each other in a different way and come up with some creativity so that we can balance both interests, which is retaining good teachers and not taxing fixed income people out of their homes. I think we've got to accomplish both things.
I agree, and I think that that's a wonderful discussion for us to take up on the 12th when we actually discuss our budget and how we're going forward on that. I think what our purpose tonight was supposed to be was to go over the contract itself and to make a determination of whether it's going to be approved or not, and if they're not approved, are there changes that the council is going to suggest that we make?
Well, I think we respect that, but I also think we have to all acknowledge the elephant in the room is the overall bigger picture, and that's certainly part of the, ultimately that's part of the discussion.
I get it.
Counselor Bounes, did you want to add something?
Well, I'm not sure who's doing the presentation here in terms of how we're approaching it. Yeah, yeah. I will say, I'm all in favor, I'm all in favor of discussing the issues thoroughly, making sure that what we do is agree to have a debate about what the issues are, what we need in other departments of the city, and what we need for our educational needs. I don't think, I think there's a lot of sentiment here for making our teacher contracts competitive. And I think we can all sort of agree with that, with maybe some exceptions. So, having framed who's presenting what, I just want to ask one question that I want you to do during the presentation. I would like to understand the rationale for the need for a referendum in the contract itself. I don't, I'm not sure I get that. I know that what you're coming here with is the idea that you want a five-year contract, and you know it's going to impact our ability to meet those needs because of the contract. I think right now, we're predicting things that we can't predict or we don't have any sense of. For example, what funds you're going to receive this year from the state of New Hampshire kindergarten, all that, that's all up in the air. So, I just want to understand the terms of the contract, in terms of your presentation, of the need for crafting into the contract a referendum at this point in time. That's...
I can certainly answer that right now, if you'd like. The reason that there was a termination provision based upon the passage or failure of a referendum was that we need to have certainty, and we need to have certainty at an early stage, that this contract is going to be in force and is going to be in place for the next five years.
Do you mean that if we found a way to fund the teacher contract this year, let's just assume that, now, and we approve the teacher contract this year, okay, without a referendum, do you still have that fail-safe position in terms of next year and the year after? It doesn't seem to me that you lose that ability to protect the teachers and to protect the contract without the referendum, but I really want you to get on with your presentation because we've all been spending too much time presenting.
Floor is yours.
Floor is mine. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Stacy, for setting it up. Appreciate it. A little background on the negotiations and why we got to where we did and how we did. When we looked at starting negotiations, the board talked about what our objectives for the negotiations were, and really what it came down to was four points. The first was that we needed to be able to offer competitive teacher pay to attract and to retain quality teachers. We needed to control health insurance costs. We needed to be able to enhance what we were doing as a school district so that we could attract some middle-class families back to the city. And lastly, we needed to do whatever we were going to do in a way that would minimize the impact on taxpayers. So, those were the four, and I think I just turned that off. There we go. With regard to offering competitive teacher pay, the base salaries steps for the teachers with four to five, four to 15 years' experience are not competitive, and I think that you probably all saw the graph and the various salary comparisons that we provided. I'm going to go through those a little bit in a second. The second was that over 60% of our teachers are four steps behind their proper steps. We've had four pay freezes over the last 12 years, and because of that, a teacher, for example, like Andy Mercer, who has 10 years' experience, Andy?
Eleven.
Eleven, is at step seven. As a result, when a district like Plymouth wants to hire Andy, they can pay him about $24,000 more than what he's making right now. That's a problem for us. If we look down below, a teacher with a BA in 12 years of experience, because of those steps, even here in Laconia, they're earning about $3,500 less than where they should be. And if you compare them to a teacher in Guilford right now at the same experience, they're about $9,500 less. And what we're finding is the good teachers are continuing to leave, and we're not able to hire people with four to eight years' experience because we're not competitive from a pay standpoint. There are some very, very good young teachers, and we've become very skilled at recruiting them and training them, and they've become very good. And unfortunately, once they hit the three or four years, they have their training and they're able to move on to more lucrative positions, and we've seen that happening as well. You probably can't see the small print on the right-hand side. I think all that you need to know when you look at this graph is that the red line at the bottom of all of those districts, which includes Franklin, is Laconia. That is what our pay scale looks like from years five to years 12. And to underscore the point, that is just the base steps. That does not reflect the fact that someone that is on year five step could actually have nine years of experience. So, despite the fact that we are the lowest in the region, we are even lower when we factor in the fact that we have over 60% of our teachers who are four steps behind. Our pay is not competitive. This is also underscored by the various comparisons. Laconia is highlighted in yellow. We are third from the last to the last in all of five, eight, and 10 on this, and if you went to 12, you'd find that we... And if you went to twelve, you'd find that we were at the bottom of those as well. And I would note that Franklin is one of the districts that is part of that comparison group. This year, we're losing eleven teachers so far. I'm hoping that will be all that we lose, but we have eleven teachers that have already informed the district that they're not returning. As you know, one of those is New Hampshire Teacher of the Year Tate Aldrich, who's a Laconia, born and raised, has taught here for a number of years. He had a higher-paying offer down in Bedford, New Hampshire and turned it down and he's going to Kingswood because it's more aligned with what he feels he wants to be teaching. He's making about twelve grand more than he would've here and it's gonna be, he's gonna be sorely lost, not just from the perspective of what a great teacher he is, but also from the perspective of Laconia having the New Hampshire Teacher of the Year and then losing him. If we could've paid him, we would've kept him. We have six more teachers who have requested extensions of time to sign contracts. We're hoping we don't lose them, but there are more good teachers there. This year, we decided in order to further reduce some costs to have four, to offer to the teachers who are slated for early retirement next year and it already been decided that we would offer that to them a year early. Four out of the five of them had accepted that offer. So, we're losing nine through early retirement this year instead of the normal five that we would've. And finally, I think that if you look at the administrative turnover that we've had over the last couple of years, you look at Dave Bartlett leaving the high school now after one year, it gets to be a grind on our administrators when every year what we're looking at is we're looking at having to cut people. We're not looking at expanding programs, we're not looking at doing innovative things. We're looking at how we can craft our budget so that we get the cuts that we need every year. And when you have unhappy teachers and you have those budget pressures, it's not surprising that we have administrators leaving, unfortunately. The second goal was, again, to control health insurance costs. We had, our rates increased by ten percent this year and continue to rise. We have the ACA Cadillac tax. If the ACA doesn't get replaced, that is looming and that's gonna be imposed in 2020. The city addressed that in their contracts last year and that was something that we needed to be able to address. We currently pay a hundred percent of premium costs and we have paid that up until now. And frankly, you know, we've tried to change that over a number of years, but we have not had the money to be able to put on the table from a salary perspective to get a change to that. That was a key point for us this year, that we needed the teachers to accept a portion of the health insurance premium in exchange for the salary increases that they're gonna be getting. And they stepped up and they agreed. So, again, attract middle-class families. I think that we've all talked about the loss of the middle class. It is not a dirty word that we have, increasing free and reduced lunch numbers, but it is reflective of that demographic shift. And I would press anybody to argue that the main driver behind where people are gonna move is the quality of the schools and the program and that it's being offered. We also needed to make contract changes that allow us to enhance the quality and diversity of our programs. Under the past current union contract, what we had was, we had a set of stipends, but we really had no mechanism under which we couldn't pay teachers for doing things that are outside of the normal scope of their duties. Things like the poetry out loud that Tate Aldrich did last year, things like the robotics programs that they're doing over in Guilford, Odyssey of the Mind. There are countless things that our teachers could be doing, but up to now, we haven't had a mechanism for compensating them for doing that. So, all of these types of programs that you've been seeing have been teachers donating their time because they're good teachers and we've got a lot of them. And again, that was the need to be able to utilize teachers in non-traditional ways. Minimizing the impact on the taxpayers, you're noting that it's a five-year contract. There's a reason for that. I would much prefer to get us to where we need to be within three years, but there's no way that we were gonna realistically be able to do that. We did not wanna increase our budget by more than five percent each year. We strove for that and the only way that we could structure this teacher contract so that it would be reasonably palatable to you and the voters would be to stretch it out over five years and that's what we did. If we look at the salaries, again, it's a five-year agreement and we strove to do that because we needed to reduce those amounts of annual budget increases. Our salary scale is gonna, if you approve it, is gonna increase to approximately one-hundred-and-two percent of Guilford's base scale. Now, the one thing to remember with that one-hundred-and-two percent is even with that scale at one-hundred-and-two percent, over sixty percent of our teachers are still gonna be making less than what the Guilford teachers are gonna be making because they're still, at the end of the contract, gonna be two steps behind. We're looking at average increases in salaries of seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-three-fifty-one and as Counselor Hamel has pointed out, that is the change in the number, in the amount of the salaries. That's not the cost item. Those cost items have been reduced due to the stipend changes and due to the insurance piece. So, those amounts are actually lower. Even when we're increasing at these amounts, we are still significantly below Concord, Plymouth and Interlakes. We're not going for the Cadillac here. This is the Toyota Camry. You know, we're, right now, we're looking at the, does anybody remember the Chevy Vega? Yeah, we have a lot of younger crowd here. If we look at the structure of the salaries, the first two years are essentially balancing the need to get those teachers that are behind four steps back to being behind two steps. So, what we're doing here in year one is that we're double-stepping all those teachers that are four years behind. We're giving all steps a seven-hundred-dollar increase. The problem in doing the double steps and seven-hundred increase is that those teachers at the top of the scale are not gonna see any increase. And unlike in other districts, teachers at the top of our scale up until now have not received off-step payments. Guilford, for example, has payments of fifteen hundred dollars per year of experience above their top-step level and that's common with most districts. Our teachers have not, so they haven't seen a raise. So, what we did was that we made that top step go up seventeen hundred dollars. What that does, for the most part, is because of the double steps and because of those step increases, we're seeing fairly steady amounts of increase within the first year and that's keeping us within the numbers that we were hoping to do, which, again, from a cost standpoint, I think if we look later on in the presentation that it's going to be at about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars cost due to that. In year two, we are double-stepping those that are three steps behind. So, that is all those teachers that are four in year one plus all those teachers that are three in year one. If you're three steps behind, you're gonna get back to where you were to being two steps behind. All steps are getting twelve hundred bucks and those at the top are getting thirteen hundred in addition to the increase to the stop-step amount. Years three to five is where we really get to where Guilford is. So, years one and two are balancing money and putting some money within the scale. In years three to five, this is where we address our salary issue, which is in the middle of our scale. So, from years three to five, we have whatever the percentage is to get up to whatever one-hundred-and-two percent of Guilford is, those are the increases. So, what you're gonna see is that you're gonna see some of those teachers that are now, you know, in the middle, you know, eight to ten, steps eight to ten, some of them are gonna be getting ten to twelve thousand dollar raises. But some of those at the top and some of those at the bottom are gonna get very, very minimal raises during those years. The idea here is that during those last three years, which are the critical years to this contract and it's why we have to have this go to term, is that this is where we get to where we need to be, which is competitive with Guilford, competitive with Wena Squam, competitive with Shaker and all those other districts that are now paying significantly more in the middle than we are. If you know, there are no double steps after year two and at the end of this contract, over sixty percent of our teachers will still be two steps behind. And even though our scale, our base rate scale is at one-hundred-and-two percent of Guilford, sixty percent of our people will be making between seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight and seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars less than a teacher with the same experience in Guilford. So, if we're looking at, why are we at one-hundred-and-two percent of Guilford? Why are we not at ninety-eight or ninety-five? That's a compelling reason why. If we're looking at the salary placement, what we have right now is that there is no change to our current practice. We are gonna be placing newly hired teachers on steps that correspond to their level of credited experience. That was a concession made by the union. They were concerned that we were giving preferential treatment to new people coming in and I understand their concern. However, in order for us to be able to hire people at the middle of the scale, we really needed to be able to maintain the flexibility to pay them what the going rate is and they were unmetable to that.
What is the policy in recent years?
Recent years has been that we are, that we have put people on the step that corresponds to their years of experience.
So, even though we have teachers who have had four years theoretically where they didn't get a step, a new teacher was placed immediately on the appropriate step?
Exactly, yep. And you've touched on the unfairness. Unfortunately, you know, our concern really with this was competitiveness. How are we, if our whole point is to get to competitive, to be able to hire quality teachers in the middle of the scale, how can we put our hands behind our backs in dropping those numbers? Because we're not gonna be competitive if we have to pay two steps below. So, essentially, that was a compromise on the union's part and I commend them for understanding our position in doing that because it was a large compromise for them. Another compromise was being able to address new hires who are in critical shortage areas. Many of you know that we've been trying to hire a computer programming teacher for the last three years. We have not been able to hire anybody within that field. And a large part of it is that there are a limited number of those people who are available and our pay scale was so low that there was no way that we're gonna be able to attract them. So, what we negotiated with that is that if we have a situation where we have a critical shortage area and we are really having difficulty hiring somebody, the superintendent is authorized to offer them up to three steps higher than what their credited experience is. However, if we do that, then we have to recognize that our teachers are valuable who are teaching the same areas and that we need to bump them up as well. So, that was a reasonable compromise made by the board, essentially in exchange for having the ability to have the flexibility to pay for teachers that we could not otherwise pay to get. Health insurance. We are locked into the Yellow Plan with Choice Fund for this year and so that needs to be retained because we were not able to complete negotiations prior to the renewal term. That is what we have. The teachers have agreed that they will be paying two percent of their premium in year one, four percent in year two, six percent in year three, eight in four. And by the end of the contract, they'll be paying ten percent of their insurance. Ten percent is the same amount that other city employees are paying and it is the same amount that Guilford teachers are paying. So, between now and the end of the contract, we will have addressed that and we will be on the same line as the city in Guilford. The district or the LEA can reopen negotiations over the health plan at any time during the contract. What our hope here is that as rates rise, that we are able to then go back and to sit back at the table and to come to some agreements on what the actual plan is gonna be and to make adjustments to both the plan and potentially to salaries downstream if that is the case. But at this point in time, what that allows us to do is to go back and to revisit that at any time over the course. Part of that also was a concession for keeping the ACA excise tax provision in that we had added. That's not on the slide, but in the event that we are a Cadillac plan, the teachers will be responsible for paying that excise tax if that is still in place.
What's the total premium cost for a yellow plan projected to be for a family for 2017-18?
Twenty-seven-seven, I believe. Counselor?
Is that excise tax thing realistic, Mike? I mean, that's forty percent of the premium is the excise tax. I mean, it seemed to me that's gonna-
That's why we have the renegotiation language.
Sure, I mean, it's gonna have to be something different. I mean, no one's gonna be able to pay forty percent. The premiums are, I mean, that's like eight grand or more probably for, that's not realistic.
We don't anticipate that anybody is gonna be paying an excise tax. However, I think that there's gonna be a strong incentive on both sides to be able to renegotiate at that point and that's why we included that in that renegotiation language.
I mean, you know, again, I'm not trying to insert myself into any negotiations because that's not our role, but I think, you know, waiting to the end point to that being in play, I think, you know, when we hired Scott, that was sort of the number one thing that we started to work on and I think, you know, again, I'm not trying to impose myself in it, but I think it's something you gotta work on, not wait till that axe hits your necks, so to speak.
Well, I agree one-hundred percent, although, you know, with the change that it's been passed by the House and the fact that Mitch McConnell is working hard on changes, I do anticipate and I'm sure you do as well, that there will be some changes to the ACA and likely that Cadillac tax provision will go away or be changed.
So, if I could have- You know, I guess the other issue, let's say the ACA Cadillac tax gets pushed out or goes away. I guess the other issue when it gets back to, okay, let's say the eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar thresholds and that, you know, the point that the mayor was making earlier, you know, cost pressures that, you know, I think really looking at this issue, if not in this contract, you know, not waiting to 2020 to start to deal with it more aggressively, I think that in the public sector, the richness of the benefit with respect to health insurance is something that I think, you know, when you talk about taxpayer support is, you know, and you talk about overrides and things like that, that's, I think, a tough political issue, not just in the school district, but in the city itself and the state at large. I think that, you know, a good benefit is important to provide, but I think that we gotta be more creative in the long-term here irrespective of the ACA.
Oh, exactly. And that's, I think that that's one of the benefits of that renegotiation provision, that, you know, we are not locking ourselves in, as we did during our last contract, to a specific health plan. What we're saying is that we understand that there's gonna be change and that we're gonna work together to figure out what the best way is to address that. So, that's why that was in there and I agree with you. We don't know what's gonna happen in five years, but hopefully with what we have there, we'll be able to be flexible enough that we can address it.
And we'll follow up on that if I can. Just on the, you showed that we're gonna get competitive with the cost-sharing provision and I understand why it's taking that time because you had nothing to offer, kind of balance. In terms of the rest of the plan is, in terms of the deductibles and coinsurances, when you compare ourselves to Guilford and the others, is that also in the same ballpark?
It is, it is. Our plan is a little bit higher, as I understand it. But on the other hand, we don't offer dental, we do not offer life insurance, we don't offer long-term disability. So, there's a balancing act here between those pieces.
Mike, on the Cadillac tax, do you have an idea if that would take effect, what the charge would be?
Well, as Counselor Lippman said, it would be forty percent of the premium, which right now for a family is twenty-seven-seven and I think we can safely assume it will be closer to thirty, you know, within the next couple of years if we're looking at ten percent per year. So, you know, if we're looking at forty percent of thirty, you know, we're looking at about seventy-five-hundred dollars, thereabouts, I believe.
Okay, now-
I'm sorry, no, bad math. Do you have a math teacher here? Twelve thousand, sorry.
As Henry was saying, on the city side, we've been beating this down for a long time now 'cause our commitment to that Cadillac tax, if it would've, if we were gonna charge with it over a million dollars just on the city side, it would've went to the federal government. That's a million dollars that you can't give raises, you can't fix things, you can't do anything. It's just money poured down a drain, really.
It is.
And it has to be addressed.
If we go without a contract and we go without a contract next year and we get into 2020 and there is a Cadillac tax and we have the plan we have right now, you know, that's the budget hell that we're looking at.
But what I'm saying is, we've done this over the years with contracts, okay? So, you know, we address the situation and as Henry says, you're coming up to 2020 pretty quick. You know, and it takes more than two years or whatever to address that. I mean, we've been addressing- I mean, we've been addressing it through several cycles of contracts, working our way down to get out of that situation. So...
Unfortunately, this is the first contract that I've negotiated, you know, looking back in hindsight, you know, hopeful, I wish we had addressed the salary schedule at the last contract time. Last contract that we did, we gave percentage increases, which further exacerbated the problem with the middle of our scale.
The wage problem, you know, in my mind is, why are we here at this point like this? Why are we here? It's not just because of the tax cap. I don't believe that. There's other working things that were here at this point, where we're ready to go off the cliff, is what it sounds like. You know, I don't know what the answer is, but it just didn't happen overnight. It happened over a long period of time. I've been here 12 years, and through many budgets, a lot of building that we've done. So it could be also that, on the school side, maybe too much capital was put into buildings. And I'm an infrastructure person. I worked at Mel's here. He knows how hard the council and the school board at that time worked to get that new junior high school. There were some battles, I'll tell you. It wasn't easy. It was almost bloodletting, but we got it done. In the same way with the project at the high school, we got it done. But maybe some of the financing, the way it was done, should have been looked at a little more. A lot of your bonds are back-ended.
Yeah.
So when you start coming up, you know, in the next few years, you're looking at another $100,000 a year for several years to pay those notes off.
Well, we're actually looking at, if we look at the numbers, it's about...
That's just on a junior high school.
Yeah. I think I had sent it over to Henry earlier, but, you know, we ran the numbers for the... Our principal and interest on our bonds over the next five years is a total of $12,408,962. You know, and of that, there's $7 million in original principal amounts. I don't know what the actual amount is right now, but those are QZABs, which are at zero interest. So, you know, when we're looking at it, we've got $2.5 million coming out of our budget every year that is going towards principal and interest payments for the investments that we made in the buildings and such. On the other hand, I mean, you were a big proponent of the middle school. We needed it. It had to be done. With the Hewitt, the Hewitt was an investment in the future. The changes to the high school, if we weren't going to build the new one, we had to fix the one we had.
I don't disagree.
You guys made the right decision, and ladies. And I said that at the beginning of this, but you're right. You know, debt service is an issue, and it is part of why we have not had the ability to deal with the teacher contract in the way that maybe we should have in the past.
I think it was said tonight earlier by someone who was speaking, and I'm not sure anymore who it was, but I think clearly you asked, how did they get to this point? How did we, as a community, get to this point on teacher salaries? And I think clearly, a significant part of the answer to that is that, in the face of significantly declining enrollment in recent years, and declining state aid to education because of that declining enrollment, when it came to negotiations with the union, the union and the school board basically traded jobs for raises. And someone articulated that earlier tonight. We traded, I think one of the speakers addressed that exactly, was we traded jobs for pay increases. You know, that's...
In other words, keeping jobs as opposed to taking raises.
Yeah. In other words, it was like, we can either keep the number of teachers we have now or cut the teachers and give the ones left more money. And that happens year after year after year, and pretty soon, you're facing the situation that we're facing now.
There were four specific years where we had extremely difficult budgets. In the first two of them, Bob Champlin had a wonderful relationship with the union, and they were able to essentially horse-trade jobs for pay raises. We've had two other years since then, one being last year, where we just didn't have the money to be able to offer sufficient raises to go through a contract, and we didn't get there. But I think it's a combination of factors. You know, we can all play, you know, Monday morning quarterback, but the bottom line is, you know, we're down 25-9, and we need to start throwing an edelman here, you know, and get something done.
Mike, in terms of the numbers you sent me, in the 217-18 year, it's 2.5, and it basically is 2.5 to 2.4 type zone between now and 2022 with respect to the... So it's fairly stable based on everything that's coming off and on in other places, I think.
Well, off and on, yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead. Great. Thank you. We also made some changes to the buyback language. We altered that to increase the amounts paid for buyback. We had actually pushed for increasing those buyback amounts, and the reason for that is that we wanted to provide a real incentive for our employees to accept the buyout. When we have an employee that accepts the buyout and they have a family plan, for example, you know, we're saving the district about $20,000. So that if you have somebody that has a spouse that has insurance, that is, say, a teacher in another district, if we can offer more as a buyback, we can entice them to have them take their spouse's insurance and save ourselves about 20 grand. And that was something that we had pushed, and we were able to do that. When we looked at our stipends, we have known for a while that our stipends are higher than Guilford's, and they're higher than many of the others. You know, part of the reason for that is that our salaries were low, and you're not going to cut stipends when that's what is keeping a lot of people with the district. You know, your coaches who are using that as their extra income, your French club, your key club, all of those. So we have not touched stipends, and in fact, they had built-in escalators where the rest of our contract did not. So those have continued to increase. What we've agreed is that we're going to have a joint committee that we formed, and within the next three weeks, we're going to come up with a new stipend schedule that's going to bring it more in line with Guilford. In the event that we can't come to an agreement, which I certainly hope is not the case, then what the default is, is going to be a 5% reduction across the board. And in any event, we are going to be phasing out the experience pay by $100 per year on that, which is also going to result in some significant savings. The last piece of that with regard to the stipends is something that I'm actually very, very excited about, and I think it's going to be transformative. You know, what we've done is that we've agreed that we're going to have a pool of at least $20,000. I'm hoping that within the next couple of years, it's closer to, you know, $50,000 or $60,000. That we are going to earmark towards projects that are being proposed by teachers, that are going to have them doing non-traditional things that are going to benefit our students and to benefit the district. You know, maybe that is the poetry out loud, maybe it is the robotics program, maybe it's coding after school, maybe it is interpretive dance, maybe it is a teacher that's going to agree that they're going to be writing a weekly column for the Laconia Daily Sun that's going to talk about a student or a faculty member or someone else within our community. This gives us the ability to pay teachers to do those sorts of things that are outside of their normal realm, that are going to allow us to project the image that is the one that we want, and is also going to help our students. So that's a key provision, as far as I'm concerned. The termination provision, I think that we've talked about that quite a bit already. I don't know if anybody has further questions on that. Are you, Henry?
I mean, I think a number of us have raised it, Council of Bounds. And to me, I think that particular, that particular provision is really, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think the way it's worded is not helpful to getting the contract passed, in my perspective. The, I mean, I think the issue is you're saying you need $850,000. I'm not sure it should matter to you, because even if you, we approved the contract exactly as is, right? I mean, the future councils can do something else, right? And then that's why you have that provision in there, that basically that opens the contract back up, right?
Yep.
So to me, I think we're creating maybe some unnecessary noise around this whole problem by going at it the way it's proposed here in the language. Just because, you know, again, studying the issue a little bit, that I think there's another way to get to a point where we can, you know, work together again to tackle another problem that we face.
So if we were to, for example, change that language that would say that we could, that we would terminate, that we would have the ability to terminate in any year in which the council did not increase the district's budget by 850,000, and eliminated the referendum language, and eliminated the override language, that would be more palatable to the council?
That's my sense. I haven't had a conversation in that respect, because I think, you know, to be honest, I watched you two times on TV. We've had conversations. There's some stuff to this in terms of penetrating it and thinking about it, that it takes a while to sort of get your arms around. And so, you know, I do, I would, I'm not trying to cut off your presentation by any means. I want to hear the whole thing. But I do think it would be good to have some discussion in between now and the time that, you know, we take a vote on it, whether we... I think it'd be to all our benefit for us to be able to hear your presentation, think about the issues that both the public had to say and you had to say, and potentially even have some dialogue together, and, you know, make a decision within the timeframe that's allotted by, you know, the rules that govern these types of contracts.
Yeah. I don't want to predict what this council is going to do for a whole or anything, but I think my concern, as I indicated at the beginning, has been tying this to a referendum and that kind of language, rather than just straightforward language about what you need on a yearly basis, and because, well, I won't say anymore. I'm going to let you finish your presentation.
The only thing I would add there is to quickly, is to clarify that the tax cap is part of the city charter. To change the tax cap, we would have to, it's not a referendum, we would have to change...
The city charter.
The city charter.
That's understood. Yes.
I think that's what he's talking about in terms of a referendum. I think he might use the wrong...
It's not a non-binding referendum. It would be a proposal to change the city charter, and we either do it or don't. The voters either approve it or don't approve it.
It's a ballot initiative.
I guess where I come from, I think if we put the energy in trying to address the issue as opposed to debating the referendum or the charter change, I think we can come to a solution.
He has a... I'm just trying to accentuate the fact that this is a formal move. It's not an informal thing. It's a very formal thing.
Yep.
We would have to change the charter.
Exactly. And that can either be put on the ballot by the council or it can be put on by a petition of 20% of the voters that voted in last municipal election, so...
So I have one more question, but go ahead and finish, and I can come back to it.
Again, a five-year agreement is longer than normal, but I think I've explained why it needed to be there. If we're looking at what the estimated costs are, as I indicated to Counsel Hamill, those are the numbers that are adjusted based upon what the decreases are in the health insurance and in the stipend schedule. So that's how it gets to where it is.
From the 850.
From the 720 average. It's, yeah.
Is that, is the use of the word "can" there appropriate, or is that not appropriately "will" or "shall be"? Agreement can be terminated or will be terminated?
It can be terminated.
So whose option is it?
It's the school districts.
Okay.
Or the unions, for that matter, yeah.
It doesn't automatically terminate?
No. No, but if it does go, if we do get a budget increase less than 850, you know, then there would be the ability to terminate the contract in that year. So basically, although it's a five-year contract, this council has the ability in any given year to say, "Sorry, guys, we're not going to give you 850." And if that were to happen, then that would trigger the termination provision and allow this contract to be terminated. And that's not something that either the union or the board wants. But it is able to be done. We had some changes to our reduction in force and evaluation language. We had made a change last year to the RIF language that was in response to the New Hampshire Supreme Court's decisions that said that seniority could not be the only factor in determining reduction in force. Last year's reduction in force resulted in some of our teachers losing their jobs, and there was the feeling that some of our newer teachers were spared, and it didn't seem fair to the union, and we agreed, so we changed that language so that our RIF language now reads that if you don't have two years within the district, or you don't have four years total, that you were the first to go before those that have been here and are on continuing contracts. What we're doing in addition is that we're forming a joint evaluation committee that's going to look at evaluation recommendations, excuse me, recommendations to evaluation procedures. We've been working on teacher evaluation process for a number of years, and both the union and the school district are going to be working together on that. Lastly, I had taken out some of the other language slides from my school board presentation, but one that I thought that you would want to see is the change to the early retirement. The way that our system works here in the district and has for many, many, many years is that there are five teachers each year that are eligible to take early retirement. Up until the last contract, the minimum age was 60 years old. At the last contract, which was four years ago, it was negotiated at 55. It was, excuse me, it had been 55, it got renegotiated up to 60. During this contract, we've renegotiated it down to 57, but what we did was that we required that there was no increase in health insurance costs that were associated with it. So rather than paying additional years for someone who retires at age 57, for example, we are paying the equivalent of five years of premium, and that's how we broken that out.
Is that 100% of the premium?
Yes.
So that's $120,000.
If they're a family, I'm sorry, it's for a single. It's not for a family. So it's only about 10 grand.
But if they want family insurance, they could go through the school district to get it.
They can. They have the ability to do that, yeah.
At one time, I asked this question. In other words, so from age 65 to 60 at the time, and now you're down to 57.
Yep.
So there's a pool of people out there, probably a pretty good pool by now, of taking that benefit.
For our...
At one time, of course, this was a long time ago now, or halfway between my term here, it was over $250,000 the school was paying for insurance. So I don't know what it is now. It could be less, it could be a lot more.
Well, if you think about it, it is true that we do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Why?
Well, you know...
Nobody on the outside can get that. I had to go on the great insurance that the government provided for a while, and it was costly. Don't get that gravy thing. And I don't know of too many people on the outside that get that. It's a great benefit, I guess. You can retire early, and you don't have to worry about your insurance at all until you're 65. Then you go on with what everybody else has. It's a huge expense where that money could go back to the teachers that are here.
I don't disagree. I pay for my own health insurance premiums out of my own pocket. I pay $21,000 a year. So I know what it costs, and that's for a high deductible plan.
Yeah. Probably 12 or more thousand deductible.
Unfortunately, you know...
These are things you've got to look at. I mean, there's got to be a point where it's a nice thing to do, but is it affordable anymore? It's not. You know, and the other thing is, and the city's just as guilty, and everybody that's in state or federal, whatever, schools, you name it, police, fire, we've all, over the years, taken federal and state money. That's what we live on. It's, at some point, you can see it ending now. The pensions, the state used to pay 35%. It's all ours now. Ours went up 300, yours went up 500. The state used to pay 35%. It's all ours now. Ours went up 300. Yours went up 500.
Yep.
On this term. Two years from now, it's going to be the same thing because it's underfunded. It used to be $4 billion short. It's five now. It's unsustainable. And they have to understand that. These high retirement wages can't happen. I mean, it showed it in the paper not long ago. Hundred and thirty-five thousand, eighty thousand, you know, it's just, and the people, social security's 21. You know, I'm sure teachers get a, I don't think, I doubt if it's that much because they don't have the ability for the overtime, but they're going to get a good retirement and they deserve it. But a lot of this stuff, it's truly unsustainable. It's a nice thing. It's been promised, but at some point, it's going to come crashing down. There's no way around it. Twenty-one trillion dollars in debt as a country.
I don't disagree.
Are you going to pay that back?
I don't disagree.
You can't. You just say, sorry, they're not paying it back. So these are all things,
you know, that we have to take in consideration too. It's tough. I mean, because of your lower pupil population, I mean, you've been hit hard. And they're looking right now to reduce Medicare, I mean Medicaid, all these things through the federal government.
So explain to us what the district's motivation here is on this page.
Here at the last page?
The retirement, the retirement page. What's the motivation?
We've got a number of teachers who are 56, 55, that have over 30 years of experience in the district. We have teachers that are of the age where they can apply and they have, you know, maybe 20 years of experience because they've come into the district at a different time during their tenure. You know, what the idea here is, is that you have someone that's worked 20 years and they're able to retire with the full benefit and someone that's 57 can't be, even though they've worked 15 more years here in the district. We're going to be limiting it to five anyway. And if there's been someone that's been here for 35 years, even if-
Why is it to the district's benefit to have people retire before they're 65 years old?
Well, a couple of things. You know, what we see less of is burnout. What we see more of and we have seen more of over the course of time has been cost savings. You know, if I've got a teacher that's got 35 years of experience, they're at the top of the scale, you know, and we're able to then have them retire and hopefully after this contract is over, we'll be able to hire people with four or five years of experience who are not brand new teachers, who are experienced. They're going to be stepping in, you know, 30, 40, or 20 or 30,000 less. So, yeah, we're paying out during that time period, but we're also, you know, reducing the overall cost because we're able to hire people at a lower place on the scale. So that's the ultimate benefit to the district, to allow teachers who may be burnt out to leave and to allow those teachers that want out to leave and to be replaced by teachers that are less expensive.
Was this a teacher negotiated or was it a board negotiated? Who was looking for this?
Looking for the change from 60 to 57?
Yeah.
That was the union.
Okay.
Yep. But, I mean, this provision has been in our contract as long as I, as long as I've been around the district and even before then. So really, the only changes that we've seen over the years has been the age that's applicable. And it's a fairly common provision. It's not one that's not found in a lot of other union contracts. This is not a white elephant here.
Well, I didn't know that. Thank you.
So if I could, let me back up a couple of pages just to make sure that there's not a misunderstanding on my part about the bottom line numbers here. The proposal that's before us tonight says that in effect, we can argue over the particulars, I guess, about how you get there, but basically you're saying that what the school board wants is to be guaranteed that it will have a minimum of an $850,000 a year increase in its budget in the, on the property tax line, the net budget, not the gross budget, for each of the next five years, basically.
Correct.
Okay. So in 2017, 18, if you get this, then you'll have guaranteed that $850,000. The actual cost of the contract put before us tonight in round numbers is 650, correct? So am I understanding then that basically what you're proposing there is you've got a fudge factor, for lack of better, something better to call it, of $200,000? Because your contract's going to cost you 650. You're saying you've got to have 850 guaranteed. Okay. So that leaves you $200,000 of a slush fund, if you will, account. So if retirement goes up $200,000 and nothing else goes up a dollar, you've hit it right on the money.
No, actually, what-
Is that, am I right there or do I-
No, no, no.
Not understanding.
What we've got is we've got about $900,000 worth of cuts and there are-
I'm not talking this year. I'm talking about subsequent years. I'm trying to talk about years out.
Oh, the years out. Well, those are already accounted for in terms of-
2018 and 19, you're saying you need 850,000 guaranteed and the contract's going to cost you 621.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's 230 that you're to the good there after the contract.
And if we look at-
So does that 230 have to cover all the other increases you're going to find in 2018, 19?
Yes.
And if that number goes over that, then you have to make more cuts.
Exactly. Yeah. And there's Christine. Maybe she can answer that a little bit better.
I would just add, just to give you a perspective of what we're asking, the 850,000 is the equivalent of a two and a half percent CPI.
Christine, I know who you are, but would you let the clerk have your name?
Yes, Christine Blue, I'm business administrator for the school district. Sorry. So that would be the equivalent of a two and a half percent CPI increase and a $20 million building permit increase. Just to kind of give you an idea, this year we're at 1.3 and 17 million. So we're not, you can see that it's attainable, but we just need that floor to make sure that we can sustain the contract.
Okay.
I understand, but, I mean, somebody, I think Councilor Bowers brought up the retirement thing, or maybe it was Councilor Hamel did, I think, that, I mean, if you take a $500,000 hit in two years on the retirement fund, you're screwed again, right? This isn't going to help you, or will help you, but it's not going to help enough.
That's my point in terms of stuff is going to happen and you've got to get out ahead of it before it actually happens to you. So even if you achieve this agreement, you've still got to work and get in front of the next thing that's going to hit you.
I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate the work that you all have done.
This is a great discussion. Can we finish the presentation?
Try to minimize that number as much as you have because obviously you have done that. I'm just saying that for anybody in this room that thinks this is a cure-all for the next five years for school budget issues, it's not. Or it's likely not.
On the 850 that you're asking, so say next year the CPI goes up to 3%. So I'm just, I'm just going to throw numbers out. You've got $500,000 this year roughly, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So say next year you get a million. So you're going to still need the 850?
They'll have a million instead of the 850.
No, they'll have a million, they'll have more.
They won't need anything.
So you won't need the 850 if-
It's part of the million.
Pardon?
It's part of the million. So we're saying that there's a floor which we need and that floor is 850. Anything above is a benefit to the district in terms of what we'd have to cut to bring others in.
So if inflation is, if inflation is 6%, then they're covered, right?
Definitely.
If it's 3%, they're-
We're just creating a floor.
Well, 3%, they're not.
Well, because there's the amount-
So Diane, you said $230,000 a point, right? Tax cap space.
There's two components to it, though. There's the construction component.
Construction would be added to that.
Which you, I think, you know, if you just look at where the CPI is through April, it's like 2.2, 2.4, somewhere in that neighborhood, right? And if you had 17 million, I think it was, which is the same number we had this year, make it 20. We're coming at about, the tax cap would provide $785,000 roughly to-
They're at 23 million.
We ran the numbers earlier today. $785,000. Okay, so that makes the problem in terms of trying to solve it. If 850 is the floor, the difference between 785 and 850 is the issue. It's not 850. It's-
Correct.
It's the difference between 850 and 785, which is a much different problem. And also is suggestive that we can probably find a way to solve that without bringing all the tax cap stuff into it.
So this year, so if I got this right, you can tell me if I'm wrong. I probably am. So you need the 850. You've got $500,000 through the tax cap. Does that mean you need 350 to finish this off?
For this year?
Yes.
No. No, we're talking, the hypotheticals were for next year.
That's what this budget's for, is next year.
So-
You're talking 19, right? Next school year, you're talking about?
Yes.
All right. So I heard through everything with all the figuring and all this stuff, to make this first-year contract whole, it's roughly 200,000 or a little less. Is that true?
Yes.
So why are you asking for 850?
That's for the referendum that we need going forward.
I'm sure that this council could help with 200,000 or less to make your first-year contract work, which is two steps, correct?
Yep.
So why are you lobbing hand grenades? You know, when I saw this come here, I'm saying, a five-year contract, who does that? You have no clue what's going to happen next year. Could be hundreds of thousands of dollars you're not going to get and you're right back into it, even with the fudge factor of the $200,000. You know, I could vote for this tonight, say, I'll vote for it. Fine. Deal with it under your tax cap. I'll vote for it, just like you made a contract and you threw it at us.
If you did that, though, you would-
True. It's true. It's what you did to us.
Contract would not, would-
It wouldn't work, would it?
Not that it wouldn't work. It would not be valid because that's because it-
Correct. Because you want us to break the tax cap. But if you would have came to us, now I heard you say you invited. I didn't get an invite. If you would have came to us, say, this is the situation, our teachers are underpaid, they probably are. I don't disagree because I remember three years, they didn't, they didn't take a raise. That's not our fault on this side of the table. We gave you the money you asked for. The taxpayers gave you the money you asked for. Taxpayers have been super generous to the school system with all that's been built and all, good stuff. I'm not saying it's not. Unbelievable athletic field. People come here from all over the state and say it's the best in the state. But what I'm saying is, we could have dealt with this, I think, instead of proposing something that, I don't know, if anybody around this table is going to vote for it. I'm not. And I'm sorry to have to say that, but I can't vote, take taxpayer money out of their pockets for five years in the future that we have absolutely no clue what's going to happen. Maybe everything will be rosy. We've got a new president. Maybe everything will be golden, right? I don't know. I hope so. But come and work with us. Because at least the first year, I don't think there's going to be a problem to solve it. We can find it somehow, somewhere. And that'll give them two steps. The next year, let's talk about it some more. But to go out five years, I don't know anybody that would do that.
Let's let Councilor Baer jump in here.
When you talk about the raises, are you also figuring in that 850,000 what it's going to cost for the retirement fund? So that is part of it. Good. The other thing, could you tell me what other wages are? You have a base wage and then you have a column of other wages. For instance, I have a teacher here who makes $39,527 base and other wages, $38,900, bringing the total wages to $78,427, not to mention pension, other costs for healthcare. So what is other wages?
Other wages can be-
Because there's loads of them.
I'm not familiar with what you're looking at, but other wages can be stipends that they do.
It's your wage schedule that you put out.
That I gave you?
Well, the school department puts it out.
Okay. So other wages can be stipends. It can be stipends.
What?
Stipends. So coaching, anything that's above and beyond their teacher's salary, their contracted base, that would be additional wages.
There's more than that for the $30,000. There are other items that are in there.
Could be disability.
No, well, they don't get disability. It could be the buyback insurance. It could be stipends. It could be-
$38,000 for stipends?
Well, it's other, they could be doing, I'm trying to think of a, I'm trying to think. It's only been here.
Let you research it. If we could find out who it is, but-
I sent that question in three weeks ago and I haven't had an answer yet.
You sent it to who?
I sent it to the, well, the city manager sent it to you. I asked the questions and I have a copy of the email.
There's a whole list of questions we sent over.
Asking for these questions.
Can I get those questions?
I think that ties to the budget more than this agreement.
Just to bring up one more thing.
The W-2 report is what she's looking at.
Yeah.
And there's a teacher here, not the only one, where it says the teacher's base salary is $39,000 a year and that same teacher also gets $39,000 a year and other wages for a total of 78,127.
So it's got to be, I'll look at it and I'll get back to you. I'm not familiar with who does what in the district, so, and I'll see what's included in that for you.
I want to just bring up one more thing. Mr. Jones brought it up and it's been using your presentations and it's brought up a fact about bringing people here, middle-class people, whatever. That's been one of the highest priority things of this council for the 12 years I've been here. But how do you do that? We have middle-income people in our schools. Most of them are. In our fire department, in our police department, city hall, public works, you name it, they're here. 60% of the people that work on the city side live out of town. How many people here live out of town? Bet you a lot of them. At one time, I asked the school. They gave me a thing. It was almost 60%. So the money that they're earning goes to another community and makes them rich. So if they're, I guess what I'm trying to say is, they want to work at our schools, make better schools, why not invest back into the community you're working instead of taking it away? Because it's going to be filled by what, with what Mr. Jones said. People with mother and father and kids, where are they going? Other towns.
Councilor Baer, were you finished?
No.
I'm sorry. I'll go back to Councilor Baer. Use your microphone, please.
Well, I don't have a PowerPoint to put up on the wall, so I've had to use my Yankee ingenuity, which I think we can all use once in a while. I have a graph here which you probably won't be able to see. It's small, but I would like to point out, and I think I did similar last year, if you can see it.
You can't see it if you hold it down.
The total city money that comes from the taxpayers and goes out to every department in the city. The black line here represents what the school gets in comparison to every other department in the city. The police and the fire department, they're down here in blue. The city administration, they're in the red. And then public works, which gets the least of any department, is in purple. But I have several copies and I am going to have it enlarged. In fact, I've already enlarged it. I was going to present it at the budget meeting. But I just want you to know how fair the city is in distributing funds to the various city departments that have to be covered. And as you can see, the school department is way up here and all the other departments are down here. They can't afford to give up any more of the other departments. And I'm sure the police, and they're important to children just as well as schools. If they don't keep the city safe and get rid of the drugs and everything else that's going on, you won't have any children in the schools. But- But the firemen and the policemen, they would love to get a raise. If we give you the money for that kind of raise, every department in the city, every union is gonna come in here wanting their due.
I think, Counselor Baer, though, we have a particular problem here that the school departments laid out for us in terms of, you know, retaining and, and, you know, the issue, if any other city department came to us and said, you know, they got turnover issues and retention issues, I think we'd try to work with them. And I, you know, I, you know, when I finally understand, understood the math here, you know, in this particular year, you know, there's, there's a, there's a shortage of 342,000 for the coming year, right? 508, if you use the current year's tax cap formula, we, school is entitled to $508,000, okay? You know, 850 is the bogey that they're trying to get to, they're making other cuts, which brings down what the gap is, to my understanding, until, under 200,000 in year one of the agreement. Potentially, we might benefit community at large, you know, this uncertainty around it, but there could be money coming from the state level over the next two years in the neighborhood of $200,000. The first year, we already got...
For kindergarten.
For kindergarten. Then, if you just, if you take more realistic sense of where we are gonna be in '19, which is, we have one quarter of experience, actually four months of, one-third of the year already down, and we're looking at being about $70,000 short, if you carry forward with a $20 million construction line and, and the 2.2% CPI. So then, you know, if inflation is, you know, interest rates are slated to be increased, the expectation that inflation may be closer to 2% than, than 0.1% that we've had to deal with, you know, we're really dealing with a problem that's under $100,000 in the city a year. You know, we have impact fees that are, should be ramping up a little bit more. I think we can find a way to solve the gap between what the tax cap provides and what is needed to fund a contract without having to resort to overriding the tax cap, which I think ends up being, you know, a scary thought for those people who in the community are on fixed incomes. And, you know, there are a number of different ideas that I think could be, could be pursued to, to stay within the tax cap and still, you know, meet the, the gap that's here. Counselor Bounds?
I made this observation at our last meeting, and I'm gonna make it again now. First, the schools' infrastructure and employees are the largest in the city, which explains why they need more money. But since I've been on the council, every year, we've dealt with the tax cap, I haven't said much in opposition to the tax cap, but every year, we've dealt with the tax cap. And while for our city departments, we've found a way to get modest decreases or modest increases, depending upon the circumstances, in my experience, every year, we've looked at the school board to take the major hit for meeting the tax cap in terms of cuts. We've asked the school board, and, and they also get hit with reductions from the state and federal, federal resources. So they're taking like a triple hit, most of the time, in terms of the tax cap.
Counselor Bounds, I...
Just let me finish, and then you can correct me.
Go ahead.
I've never been a proponent of the tax cap, but I don't believe that making the tax cap part of the equation of fair wages to our teachers and our children, our most important resources, is the way to go, the way to go. If you wanna get rid of the tax cap, just do a petition to get rid of the tax cap. You can do that and put the, put the money on the table at the election. But to tie one to the other isn't productive. One, there isn't, a lot of people at this table that would support any legislation or any charter amendment to eliminate the tax cap, and I'm well aware of that. I've said before that if we keep seeing dwindling amount of money that's available because of the tax cap, we're going to have to do something about that. But in my view, the tax cap or any referendum is a separate issue from meeting the basic needs of the school board to fund teachers at a competitive rate, which we do for most other departments, and we should be doing it for our teachers. When people come to Laconia and think about getting a house, what's the first question they ask? What are your schools like? Now, we've got a solid infrastructure, but we're losing teachers on a yearly basis because we can't pay them. That's not the kind of answer that's gonna bring young families to the city. And two, every time we talk about the tax cap and the benefits to the seniors, I can understand that, but I also want people to understand that it's good publicity to talk about why you should come to Laconia. It's not particularly good publicity to say, "We can't pay you anything because we've got an aging population that we need to take care of." That's not good publicity. And I'd like the council to engage in good, solid publicity in attracting people to come. Now, your turn, correct me what I do wrong.
Well, in terms of the, your history of notwithstanding the state cuts that are related to the...
Speak up!
Speak into the mic, they can't hear you.
Thank you. The, the monies that the schools had to contend with is not a function of the tax cap, it's been a function more of what's happened in terms of the changes in the school formula. You took a half a million dollar hit last year alone, if my recollection's correct, related to the school funding formula. Now, with respect to the, to the tax cap, this council on, and I think there was an acknowledgement of that going on, you know, in the early years of the, of bringing the middle school on, we lent $400,000 a year for multiple years on tax cap. We've stepped up on the years that we wanted to come in below the tax cap because of the strain that the economy of this community was in. You know, Counselor Hamel created the non-capital reserve fund, and we've paid for roofs, we've paid for windows, we've paid for heating systems, you know, in the school district out of the city council side of, of the ledger. So in terms of, you know, all that's water over the dam, we're in a situation where we have a common set of interests here, which is to be able to, you know, be, treat our employees fairly relative to what the market is, so that we can retain, retain people. I guess the issue is, I don't think we have to plate it up as we need to override the tax cap based on the amount of dollars between where we are, what the, what the gap is to get to 850. If 850 is the number we need to work towards, I think we can skin that cap fairly easily.
I think I said, I just agreed with you on that.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for our guests here before we...
Can I just stand up and say something?
Sure.
First of all, I just wanted to introduce myself formally to the council. I'm Brendan Minahan. I'm Brendan Minahan, I'm the superintendent of schools. Most of you I met earlier this past year, but I had more hair then, so I thought that I better reintroduce myself. I need another one. I know, I know, I see where it's going. I wanted to thank you for your willingness to work with the school district. We, listening to most of you, some of you have still kept pretty quiet, but listening to most of you, it seems like we're all trying to work towards the same goal, which is to make sure that, like in business, our teachers are competitive with other teachers in the region, because that's how you keep retention. It was brought up, the question about people not living in the community, but a number of people that stood up were teachers in different communities who chose to live here and have their children attend school here. From the research, I just wanna tell you, and I'm sure you know, the best schools, of which we are one of them, one of the best districts, has consistency, then the quality of the teacher that's teaching the student, and the quality of the principals and the administrators. Those are the top three predictors of the best schools in a community. The only thing that I wanted to say is, I want to, and I think Counselor Bounds brought this up, but I ask you, like I asked the state board the other day, if we can all focus on the positives of what we're doing, in our schools and in our community, this is such a wonderful community. I have been in probably more than I should, five communities or so, and they're all good in their own way, but I have never seen a community that cares so much about each other and about getting things done for the betterment. So I wanted to thank you for that, but I wanted to also ask that we all understand, when we get to these tough things, you know, people ask me, "How is it in Laconia?" And I say, "It's awesome in Laconia if we just didn't have to talk about money and the tax cap," because it sometimes brings out our worst selves, I think, on all sides of it. So I wanted to thank you for that. I also wanted to do two other things. One is, I wanted to let the council and the school board know, the U.S. News and World Report listed the Laconia High School as a bronze medal-winning school a couple of weeks ago, maybe about a month ago. You will not believe the schools that are not bronze medal winners, okay? There's very few in New Hampshire that would be silver or gold, but that's indicative of the number of AP courses we offer. Don't always have the highest enrollments in them, but the kids that take them and the scores that we receive, that is something to be very proud of. The other thing I wanted to mention, nothing against Mr. Pearson, who called it Odyssey of the Mind, but now, it's now called Destination Imagination, and you may have seen the article that our elementary, our middle school is going to globals in Tennessee, which is the top three middle schools in the state in that area. So there's lots to be proud of, I thank you all. I really just wanted to introduce myself, because I saw Counselor Baer at one of the last meetings lean over to Counselor Hamel and say, "Who's that guy sitting here?" I can read lips fairly well, so...
We have the same name.
I know we do. Well, I'm thinking of changing mine.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we'll put it out for a contest. Thank you. You are, I appreciate the permission, so thank you, it's getting late.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Pearson before we deliberate amongst ourselves? Thank you. Something else comes up, we'll call him. All right, so the matter's back to the council now, strictly for discussion. So is there any more discussion before we get to possibly making motions? Anybody have anything else they wanna...
We're not gonna vote on this tonight, are we? We're not gonna vote on this tonight, are we?
Well, that would be a motion, wouldn't it? I said before we get to motions. You know, I, I think we need, you know, we have a statutory obligation here, and just so everybody on the council knows what that is, some of us, I think, are aware of this, but I'm not sure everyone is. The, the, the school district notified us officially that they have this contract for our consideration on May 8. And by statute, we have 30 days to act on it, up or down, okay? So June 8. So in response to Counselor Bounds's question, do we have to act on this tonight? No, we don't.
June 7.
We have to act on it by June 7, right. And between now and then, we have, at this point in time, we have one meeting scheduled, and it is a budget meeting, a special meeting, on the 5th of June. But we could add that to the agenda if we so desired on the 5th of June. That is the only scheduled meeting we have now, that doesn't mean we can't schedule another one, but that's the only scheduled meeting we have now between the time and when we statutorily owe them an answer. Now, the first step, from a procedural standpoint, would get, would be to entertain a motion to get this matter on the table as an official motion. Once we do that, and it's on the table, then any other motions relative to it, including tabling or any other suggestions, would be in order.
Can I ask a question of the city manager? Is there any way, I mean, I think we've got the school budget focus coming in on June 19th now?
June 12.
June 12. Is there any way to extend this June 7 drop dead date by agreement or by motion or by any other means?
The statute is set by, for the PELRB, the Public Employee Labor Relations Board, and it basically says you, as the legislative body, need to respond with a vote within 30 days of being notified of it. So I could ask legal counsel tomorrow to see if there was an opportunity to make a formal request for an extension, and I don't know who that would go to. I would assume certainly the PELRB is there to protect employees, so I'm not sure if that, even if it were to be allowed, then it would need to go to the union in order to, but I, I don't know any of that until I speak with legal counsel.
That sounds complicated.
Counselor Lippman?
I'd suggest making a motion to table it, taking it up formally for vote on June 5, and between now and then, I would suggest a meeting or two, I'd suggest the 25th and 30th, just based on schedule, to get a group together of both council and school board and whomever, to look at trying to, you know, quantify what the real gap here is that we're trying to fund over this five-year period, because I think, you know, it started off with the understanding, which was incorrect, that it was 4 million plus, right? It's not. And, you know, I think that, as I said a number of times, I think there's a way to solve this and, without having to also make it a referendum, to give time to the school board, maybe to talk to the, to the union about, you know, following Doc, David Bounds' Council Bounds's suggestion of, you know, does it have to be structured this way for us to vote on it? I think it makes it difficult for, for a number of us to vote on it. But I think if we could get to the, the financial piece, I don't think the financial piece is really that, that big that we can't solve it.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
I second that motion.
So I understand the first part of the motion. The motion is to...
Table.
Table the request to approve a tentative agreement between the Laconia School Board and Laconia Education Association as presented.
Until the, the June 5?
Until June 5.
And then in between now and June 5 is to work on both the, what the structure of the financing really is, to understand, because I don't think the council or anybody here walking in tonight knew, knows what the number really is, like us to work on that a little bit together. And then I also, you know, you don't have to, but would ask if you can talk about whether we can restructure this in a different way, as long as we're providing the 850,000 floor.
Can we do it as a committee, and then we don't have to set a meeting, or, I mean, we can set a committee meeting?
Right, that's what I'm suggesting.
Well, I think you should be on this, Bum.
You wanna leave that up to the discretion of the city manager to arrange for, or how do you want us to do that?
I guess I'll throw two dates out, the 25th and the 30th, I know I can make, but...
So I'm happy to coordinate with, with the school administration on trying to put together if the motion is, if the council, I know Counselor Hamel is gonna be away, but if, if the council were to designate three individuals to form just a... but if, if the council were to designate three individuals to form just an ad hoc committee to work on this, if that was the will of the council, we can certainly handle the posting of, the legal posting for meetings, coordinate with the superintendent and his staff, the school board chair, you know, through the superintendent, obviously, and see if we can arrange for the school board to participate and host those meetings. Those would be public meetings, because it would be a committee of the council, but I'm happy to coordinate that on mutually agreeable dates.
So what's your... So part B of Counselor Lippman's motion would be to, to ask the city manager to facilitate a committee meeting, for lack of a better word, between representatives of the city council and representatives of the school board on either Thursday, May 25th, or Tuesday, May 30th.
Or both, if we need it.
Or both, if necessary, I guess, to better inform ourselves toward making a decision on June 5th. Correct?
Yes.
All right, so how are we gonna, how are we gonna do the makeup of that delegation, so to speak?
Well, I mean, I think on a volunteer basis, I guess would be my suggestion.
All right, if more than three people want to volunteer? Do you want to volunteer?
Should be somebody from each side.
Should be somebody from each side.
Okay, so Counselor Baer volunteers, you volunteer, who else volunteers? Counselor Doyle volunteers. Anybody else?
I'll help out, don't mind.
Hmm?
I'll go.
Now we're at four.
If we're posting it as a legal meeting, then, and you're not limited to only three, I mean, obviously, the more people in the room, the more conversation there is, but we're happy to accommodate.
I say we keep it at three.
I think there's, I think if there's interest on the part of the council in terms of...
Neutral, yeah, neutral.
Although from a legal standpoint, what the city manager's pointing out, as soon as there's four of you, and it's...
Neutral, leaning one way, leaning the other. Isn't that perfect?
Nothing's perfect.
I am.
Bob wants my spot, if you can make it, you can have it.
Whatever. I'd like to say something, though.
Yeah.
All right? All right. While the contracts we've dealt with in the past, you either got to vote them up or vote them down.
Right.
They're voted on by our union, and they're voted on by the school board, whatever. So when it's presented to you, you got to vote it up or vote it down.
I get that.
And that's my understanding.
I get that.
So this should be voted up or voted down. If it goes down, then there's a chance to go back and say, "What can we do to work together to make it right?"
That's true.
Well, that's why I think that a meeting on the 25th and the 30th...
Why wait?
Yeah, you can't.
Because there would be an understanding...
Right.
With that amendment that's in it, of overriding the tax cap, maybe you two will vote for it, but I don't thi, I'm not going to put things in people's mouths, but I don't think it's going to pass with that clause in there.
I'm of the view that every time you have a disagreement, and you sit down and you talk about the nature of the agreement, and see if there's a way that you could reach possible solutions, that that advances...
They would have to go back and renegotiate, Dave.
But when, if we vote it down, and right now, there's probably some sentiment in this room for voting it down on June 5th, if we do that, and I'm not predicting what we do or what we don't do, at least we've put a good faith effort to trying to work towards an agreement that everybody can, that at least the council and the school board can live with, and I think that has value.
You can do that either way.
Well, let me, all right, let me answer your, or attempt to answer, I understand where you're coming from, but what I'm presuming, that Counselor Lippman is presuming, is going to come out of these meetings, hopefully, from his perspective, is an understanding that the council is not going to be willing on June 5th to approve the contract, and we legally have to take an up or down vote. That's true, and we could do that on June 5th. So they would know going into the June 5th meeting that we're going to vote it, the council will not vote to approve it, but with the understanding that, hopefully, in best of all worlds, we have reached a compromise in the meantime, that they can take back to their union and say, "Okay, that contract's not going to be voted, going to be approved, but here's what's being suggested in its place, and we'll await the return of that contract from the school board."
Excuse me. If there is a compromise, they have to take it back to the union.
Yes.
Yeah.
But if they, but if they could take, but under Counselor Lippman's proposal here, if they could take back to, to the union and say, "We can get this approved by the city council if you will agree to amend it to A, B, C."
I'm just talking about the timeframe. We still have to need a timeframe. Can they get the union together after you've had some kind of a compromise to agree to a new agreement?
They don't have to do that by June 5th.
Well, they have to...
The clock starts over again, then.
Mm-hmm.
This all hasn't, doesn't have to be done by June, we just have to take an up or down vote by June 5th.
Okay.
We don't have to approve a new contract by June 5th. That could be done later.
All right.
If the understanding was in place.
Mm-hmm. I have two things to offer. May I make a motion? We extend the meeting.
Second.
It's like, three minutes till 10?
Better do at least...
First time around, by 10:20?
We all have a chance of one 10:20.
All right, then 10:30.
All right. Counselor Doyle moves to extend the legal time of the meeting to 10:30. Is there a second for that? Counselor Hamel, all those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the majority. As opposed, all right, we're good till 10:30.
What, can you do it, for the quarter hour, the half hour?
We can do anything you want.
23 minutes, if you want.
The other thing I would like to mention is, I would like to, with this second discussion, I would like for something positive to come out of this, some positive suggestions, and not end anything on a, on a negative note that it's going to be shut down tonight. I mean, I would like to have an open discussion. I'd like to come to something that everybody can live with, that would benefit both the tax cap and find a solution, and I really think that if we shut something down now, we're sending a very poor message. That's all. I just, I just really would like it to work out.
Well, I think that's what we did.
I hope so. Well, we haven't gotten that far.
I think we've made plenty of discussion about getting together and working this out to a positive thing.
But I think we need to do it in a more formal setting, and we get to June 5th, then we can do the up or down vote with these potential changes that, like Henry or David, one of the two said, that we can take to, that they can be taken to the union and say, "This is, this would, this would work. If you agree with this, this would work."
Can I call a question?
No, not yet. So we're still, we're still defining what the question is, and the issue still is, we have four volunteers for three spots.
Why can't we have four spots?
Because then we have a quorum of the council.
We can do that. Scott said we can do that.
We post it as a meeting, which I tend to do, whether we have three or four, I think this should...
Or five or six.
So then, all the councils...
So the last part of Counselor Lippman's motion will then will be to, to have a committee comprised of counselors Hamel and Baer and Lippman and Doyle. Through the city manager, attempt to set up meetings with representatives of the school board to work through possible compromises on either June 25th or June 30th, or both. To report back to the meeting.
May.
May.
I mean, sorry, May, May 25th or May 30th.
It's so much easier to do this by threes.
Just...
Just my comment.
Okay, so Counselor Hamel, what I'll point out to you, and to the rest of the counselors at this point in time, we're going to vote in a second on Counselor Lippman's motion to table. If, if you want the vote to happen tonight, then you need to vote no on his motion, for all of you. If you want the vote to be postponed till June 5th, you vote yes tonight. Everybody got that? Okay? Because if his motion fails, then a motion would be in order to approve it or not approve it tonight. Okay? All right, all those in favor of Mr. Lippman's multifaceted motion, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you, and thank you all for your patience tonight, very much. Give a second here for the room to clear, so we can hear each other.
We can go through this in a second.
He won't vote for the five-year...
Scott, do you have a copy of the contract?
David probably, even though he doesn't agree, I think it's enough Scott for him to have to include that.
Not printed with me, but I can press it.
Please, I, please, I would ask if you're leaving to clear the room as soon as you can, so we can get on with business. The hallway is open for conversation. All right, we'll go on with new business. The second item under new business tonight is a request by the New Hampshire Humane Society to waive license fees for the Bow Wow Fest, which is scheduled for...
June 3rd.
I'll make that motion.
June 3rd.
I'll second.
Why is this under new business, as opposed to a...
I don't think it's done requested to waive the...
Fees.
Actually, we've never had to apply for this license or been asked to pay this fee, even though this is the seventh year of Bow Wow.
Please identify yourself to the clerk, please.
Oh, hi, Mr. Massio, New Hampshire Humane Society.
Need to pay for the, for the trail.
Okay. Motion being ordered to waive the licensing fees for the Bow Wow Fest for 2017, as requested.
You got it.
Bob did it.
Who moved it? Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Bowns. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion is carried.
Thanks.
You're all done. Thank you.
We waited all that time.
Okay, moving on now to the mechanical bull. How exciting. Request to approve the whiskey barrel. For those of you who don't know, the whiskey barrel is a nightclub in downtown Laconia.
We don't have to call it a nightclub.
What do you call it?
It is a country-themed bar.
Country-themed bar?
Yes.
And restaurant, one presumes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, the whiskey barrel has a special event location to locate and operate a mechanical bull in the city parking lot adjacent to Beacon Street West. So before we get, you got a map in your packet there, you have a copy of the application about where they want to put it and run it from noon until 11:00 PM.
Yep.
In the parking lot on the Beacon Street West side of the building, up against the building there, it looks like.
I don't have a map here.
Any questions or comments for the applicant?
How long are you going to be doing this?
This meeting lost to history.
Well, it's no good having...
We're all set.
Yes.
Okay, who had the floor? Counselor Bowns, were you asking a question?
Yes.
He's lost his train of thought.
No, no, I'm trying to think of the name of the movie.
Urban Cowboy.
Yeah, that's right.
Ron Trubolt.
Yeah, that's right.
Counselor Baer's already got the first ticket.
That's exactly what it'll be like.
He's ready.
Have you provided the waivers to anybody?
I can always bring one by, but no, I have not provided the waivers.
What's the city's liability?
Two million?
I'll help you out, make it quick here, I'll streamline this.
All right.
Matt approached and said he'd like to expand and have a mechanical bull that they already have inside of their operation, and it's very successful. He was, as a new business, trying to be engaged in Motorcycle Week and bring some activity downtown. The request came late. I said, "Work on a parallel path with the Special Events Committee and get your approval there with your conditions of approval. At the same time, we'll get it on the council agenda, and you need to work with the liquor commission over any outdoor liquor that you're doing, because you're expanding the use." Special Events said yes, contingent on council approval, and I'll be working with the liquor commission for the appropriate safeguards for liquor in the outside area. City will be protected for identification and insurance.
Which it says, it says that alcohol will not be sold.
Will not be sold outside, but we are working with the liquor commissioner to have a gated-off fenced area for alcohol control.
Correct. So it's no difference that we do to allow temporary beer tents and stuff, they work in conjunction with the liquor commission. So we've tried to fast-track this, so we can meet the deadlines and not have one be held up by another.
Pinpoint the area.
He's using that map in your packet, it's the Beacon West, so it's right outside the door.
Know where the windmill is, it's...
You've got that.
It's where the, it's exactly where that lighthouse windmill used to be.
So it's inside that parking lot that everybody uses to go to the other stores and get out onto the...
It is, in the map, it is in the section where it curves in, where that lighthouse or whatever used to be, and I'm taking the, I'm only asking for the three parking spots next, next to us, and it is an empty unit that has been empty for three years.
So it's next to their store, not adjacent to their store?
No, but everybody drives in there.
It is not...
You know, because it's other stores, and you exit out onto Beacon Street West.
Yes, yes, but it is not actually obstructing any driving capability of in the parking lot, is...
I don't think a bull ride is not going to attract someone.
Oh, no, no, that's the idea, I want it to attract.
Well, yeah, but it's, people are going to be driving around Beacon Street West and see people. A lot of bulls.
I'm not going to lie, that was the whole idea behind it, yes. I wanted people to sit in traffic when they're sitting there, heading towards the racetrack, leaving the community, to actually see that there's a new venue there. So yes, that is why that mechanical bull is going outside, but it's not taking up any other additional parking, it's not, it's not obstructing the drive of the, of that parking lot. It fits into the spot of two parking spots.
So when you ta, when you talk about the fenced-in area, how far out into the parking lot do you perceive that?
The exact square footage of a parking spot, which is 10 foot. Yes, I am not going any further out.
That's what, 14 feet, something like that, 15 feet? Usually they're nine by something.
And the people will be within that.
Yes, that'll be all fenced off with six-foot fencing, other than an exit, for, for the fire exit and all that, for the exit of the building, which will have a security guard at it.
And you'll have someone near that keeps the liquor in that fence?
Yes, that's, from the time we open, the time we close, that is going to actually be the exit for Bike Week, so that, there will be a man sitting there from the time we open to the time we close, so that way, the liquor stays in there, and that was all, well, it's in writing to the liquor commissioner, it's not approved at this point, but it is out there.
Chief, can feel, is there any question about the safety factor, or any reason why the police department might or might not object?
No, the Broken Spoke actually does the same exact thing during Motorcycle Week.
Well, yeah.
We're having a conversation here that's not being picked up. Who are you talking to? I can't even tell who you're talking to.
Chief.
The chief.
Chief, can you come up, please, chief?
The Broken Spoke does the same exact thing at, during Motorcycle Week, at, next to one of their beer tents. So it's the same thing, it's the same thing he's doing inside, but it's just outside.
He's just asking to do it on city property instead of private property?
Yes. And I, part of the agreement was, we were going to have police details that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of Bike Week, so that way, at least there is more of a police presence in the area as well.
Did you know that?
I didn't know that. No. Captain Grayton sits on the Special Events Committee, so you must have been talking to him.
It's in the agreement. It's in the...
Do they, would that be considered a vendor and have to pay the vendor fee?
Seems to me it would.
It's an existing business, and we haven't got, we've required the certificate of insurance, we've required the approvals, we've acquired, as it says there, for the police detail. I was looking to encourage a new business and bring some activity downtown in Motorcycle Week.
Okay.
What you want again?
I got a buffalo, you can use it, a real one, though.
He's got 23 of them.
He's got a real one.
I don't think the insurance will cover that one.
Any other questions or comments? Move to approve?
I'll second that.
I'm sorry?
He moved to approve, I was going to second.
All right. Counselor Lippman moves to approve the whiskey barrel's request to locate a mechanical bull in three parking spaces in the city parking lot adjacent to Beacon Street West. That's lot 442-15-3. During 2017 Motorcycle Week, from June 10 to June 18, 2017, from noon until midnight During 2017 Motorcycle Week from June 10 to June 18, 2017, from noon until midnight each day. Motion is made by Councilor Lippman, seconded by Councilor Doyle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. All opposed, please raise a hand. We have five votes in the affirmative, one in the negative, the motion carries. Madam Clerk, did you get Mr. Meninges's name for the record? Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a request to authorize the city manager to enter into a railroad crossing agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation for a proposed crossing at Deutile Oil Messer Street and to sign any documents necessary to execute such agreement. This is on page 36 of your packet. Mr. Myers, you want to explain that to us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in conjunction with the drainage project that we're doing on Messer Street. DOT had asked for us to sign off on a temporary rail crossing agreement, which I did. Upon further review with DOT, they asked that my signature or my authority to sign be authorized by the council, and we have to send them a certificate of the vote afterwards. So this is asking you to vote to allow me to sign a temporary rail crossing so we can perform the drainage project.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Lippman moves to authorize the city manager to enter into a railroad crossing agreement with the state of New Hampshire Department of Transportation, Bureau of Rail and Transit, for the Messer Street Drainage Project at Deutile Oil and to sign any documents associated with said agreement. Seconded by Councilor Bullock, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Okay, Lakeport Fire Station requests for removal of underground fuel tank. Mr. Myers?
I happened to number five.
Number five.
Did I miss one?
Request to...
It sounds like the other one, but it's not.
Number five.
We just did four.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Request to authorize the city manager to sign an amendment to the New Hampshire DOT City of Laconia Rail Trail Agreement. So this has to do with Phase Two of the WOW Trail, correct? All right, brief us quickly, please.
So with Phase One of the WOW Trail, there was an agreement with the state about the construction and who was going to maintain the trail afterwards. With Phase Two, we went through all the presentations to the state and the approvals. They just never sent up an agreement to amend the original length of the WOW Trail on Phase One to include the distance of Phase True in the agreement. So this is to amend the original agreement to include Phase Two, which is complete, has absolutely nothing to do with Phase Three approvals or anything like that. It's strictly to amend the original agreement to include the distance of Phase Two.
Questions or comments?
It ends in Lakeport and goes to Belmont.
This is... Well, the Phase Two, the part that's not a part of the agreement is the part that now starts downtown and runs to the Belmont Town Line. So it will be amended to add that.
We need a formal agreement with the state to give us the lease to that property, which they have not formally done, correct?
Hasn't gone any further than Lakeport.
Nothing to do with Lakeport Square on that side. This is only to housekeeping on Phase Two, which is complete.
Okay. Councilor Hamel moves to authorize the city manager to sign the amendment to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation City of Laconia Rail Trail Agreement as provided in tonight's packet. Is there a second? Councilor Doyle seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Now we're on to Item Six. Laconia Fire State... Lakeport Fire Station requests for removal of underground fuel tank. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is Lakeport Landing and Erica Blizzard doing her due diligence on the property before we close on the sale of that parcel, parcels, to Lakeport Landing. And looking at the foundation work, their contractor identified an underground storage oil tank that is there. That tank needs to be removed so they can do their soil suitability testing and also continue to look at the basement. The request came that if they coordinated and paid upfront to have that tank removed, would the city credit them back that cost at closing? They had anticipated the amount to be somewhere around $6,000. I had asked to see a copy of the vendor quote they had. It seems in line. We ran it by John Gardner and one other person to look at the dollar amount. It seems in line with the type of work they're doing in order to keep that project on track. I indicated that I thought there would be support from the council, but that I authorized a go-ahead. I shared that all with you about 10 days ago, and that I would just seek a formal approval during the council meeting tonight so that at closing, we would credit them for these costs.
Right.
Is that kind of set so that $6,000 doesn't turn into $20,000 because of what they find when they pull a tank out?
Well, there's nothing absolutely guaranteed. If there's some soils there, we're still the owner, but they've been doing the probing. It's a company that's certified by New Hampshire DES to be performing this type of work. There are no guarantees in life. If there is some soil that has some unsuitable materials in it, we would have to excavate that and dispose of it properly.
Questions or comments?
Just a guess, until they get there and dig it out.
At this time, I would make that so that it doesn't exceed $6,000. Come back if it does.
Well, we certainly will be getting the report. And if it does, I mean, they're aware of what their estimate was, and they're aware that we would agree to credit those costs at closing. I'm certain that if something further comes back, they're going to come to us.
You would like to make the motion with $6,000 in it?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
I'll retract it in a minute.
All right, you make the main motion?
If we just do it without the money, we're just affirming what he told us he was going to do. Now, we're not committing to a dollar amount. If that changes, we can change that, can't you?
I can come back to you with it. And if, I mean, if it's identified... If the tank comes up and it's identified, there's some soils there that need to be handled, we're the polluting party, if you will. We own the property. If there were a leak to be, so it's going to be us if there's materials identified.
Well, I'm reluctant to put a dollar amount on it, but...
You what?
I'm reluctant to put a dollar amount in it.
We don't want it to go any higher.
There's no dollar amount on the table at this point.
I retract it.
Okay. Back away from that. All right, motion being ordered to... For the council to affirm the city manager's decision to allow the removal of the underground tank at the Lakeport Fire Station and to credit the cost of removal to Erica Blizzard, the purchase of the property at the time of closing. Someone make that motion? Councilor Doyle makes that motion. Councilor Bullock seconds that motion. Any further discussion?
One more question. Have they checked the tank to see if there's any fuel in it?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure when the contractor was planning on being there. But again, this is a contractor who's certified by New Hampshire DES to handle these types of situations.
It makes a difference if there's fuel in it.
I don't know the answer to that.
He's not giving up.
I still don't know the answer to it.
I've dealt with some of this stuff, so...
We got a pit bull over here, and he's not letting go.
It's a step that needs to be taken if we're moving to resell and redevelop that property.
There is, I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries.
The price of the price of oil was hit over 50 bucks, so if there's oil in it, then, you know...
Well, I kind of... I thought that was bought as is.
Okay, request to issue the sewer warrant for Bill's... Request to issue the sewer warrant for Bill's due July 3, 2017. And I have the sewer warrant here, ready to be sent out. Needs to be signed by all councilors. So can I have a motion to approve the issuance of the sewer warrants for Bill's due July 3, 2017, as presented? Motion made by Councilor Bear, seconded by someone, councilor?
Second.
Thank you. Councilor Bowles seconded that motion. All right, all those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, that motion carries. So let me get this warrant started around the table. All six of you need to sign that. The mayor is not involved in the sewer business, I guess. Okay, and then we are down to Robbie Mills Water Update. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought to your attention a couple of weeks ago the issue with the state water line through the state school property and how it impacted the water, meaning no water, at Robbie Mills Park. We explored a couple of options. Staff did, both with Seth Nuttlemann at our water department, Kevin Dunlevy through Parks and Recreation. Basically, looked at three options. The first was trenching and running pipe from Parade Road, a distance of over 3,000 feet, to tie in with the existing water tank. We were going to have to add additional electricity and pumps to that. The cost to run basically a seasonal line was going to be over $90,000. Second option that was approached was maybe someone coming in and sleeving the existing pipe and putting a pipe within a pipe. Again, we looked at the cost of running a pipe a distance of over 3,000 feet, and that was almost equally as expensive. The third option that's before you, a staff recommendation tonight, is to estimate from Guilford Well to drill two wells, 700-foot depth. We know that because the state just sunk a well, or two wells? Two wells up by the designated receiving facility up there for servicing that parcel and that building. They went down 7,000 feet. They needed 700 feet.
Wow.
Had to do some fracking in order to generate five gallons a minute. So we were in the similar neighborhood. We think we're going to have similar results. We've had preliminary conversations with Mike Connor at Administrative Services at the state, even though he's retired. He's still involved and has connected us with someone else. The state seems willing to help us fast-track this, if you will. We'd be looking to drill two wells, figuring on the five gallons per minute per well, pump it into the existing water tank that's there, which is already tied in with the existing water lines to go across the street. And that would be... That would allow us to handle the irrigation needs and to handle the bathroom needs, which are up there. We don't think we run into any situations, as it being a public water supply, if we're not using it for cooking or not using it for soda fountain, where you're mixing a pre-mixed bag in with the water, a number of uses a year. We think we're in good shape. We certainly will double-check that with the Water Division of DES to make sure we're in compliance. But this seems to be the least expensive of the three options. It seems to be something that can go relatively quickly, and it would get us back on track for the summer. Kevin also pointed out that he's budgeting around $4,000 a year for water within his budget, so we would have a little bit of savings by using private water as opposed to paying for water. As far as a source to do this from, my recommendation would be the non-capital reserve account. And we... In my proposed budget, we're looking to put an additional $100,000 back into that. So I think that would leave us with around $50,000 net after we finish the tennis courts, city hall windows, and this well project, about $50,000. Looking to move $100,000 back in during our budget process. We'd have $150,000 sitting there at that time.
Okay, questions or comments? Councilor Bear?
Could I bring Kevin about Rizley Field?
Do we need to extend the meeting again?
Another five minutes.
In looking for a lease agreement with Robbie Mills, I didn't find that. But I found one for Rizley Field, which is a two-year lease, should be renewed every two years. Last year I found would have expired in 2015, and I don't think we have renewed that lease.
Okay, I'll have to check into it. It's not... It's actually a license, not a lease.
One I have is lease.
Okay. What we've done in the past is got a license for use for Hank Rizley Field, which is the field across from Robbie Mills.
Yes, for the parking.
Right. So it's actually called a license, not a lease. And that's the document name that we've used. And that differentiates it from Robbie Mills because the city acquired a 99-year lease on Robbie Mills.
Right.
Right. So Hank Rizley is different because it...
What is the term of the license?
The term of the license... I'll have to go back and check. I don't know what it is, but we... I know we've renewed it, and sometimes there were options for renewals. But my guess is, in my conversations recently with Mike Connor, is we're going to be looking at a new license for... Because we're going to be dealing with these wells. So we're going to be looking at a whole new license anyway. So anything up there would be wrapped into a new license that would be executed as soon as...
Pay for that license, or is it just...
No, it's no fee. In fact, he said that the state will draft the language for that. We'll probably want to have our attorney review it. But that will be... What I'm saying is, is any license for use of Hank Rizley will need to be modified, and we'll have to do a new one anyway because of the water system.
My thought was that it did expire two years ago, and something goes on with this state school development. It doesn't show that the land is being leased at the moment, but it's not that big a deal to get it.
Well, there's nothing...
Well, that's what I mean. I thought it was worth mentioning.
Is that a longer-term thing that you're going to negotiate?
What we're planning on doing is doing a license for an immediate need. And then we're going to look at long-term easements, which would be the more appropriate thing. But those are going to need some time to work out for obvious reasons.
Councilor Hamel?
I'll make a motion to extend for another 15 minutes.
Councilor Hamel moves to extend the legal time of this meeting to 10:45 P.M. Seconded by Councilor Hamel or Councilor Bullock. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. We're now good to 10:45.
I don't know about that half of the table that are asleep.
I was reluctantly raising my hand.
So is now the proper time to tell you we have to have a non-heating?
Oh, goodie. We still have to have a policy discussion.
I'll make a motion that we...
Wait a minute. I'm sorry, I digest.
We do?
You have a question?
Is already a motion for this?
No, we don't have a motion.
No, I'll make a motion that we accept the procedure that was outlined for the new Robbie Mills watering system.
An amount of approximately $50,000.
$50,000 to be taken out of the capital reserve fund.
All right. Councilor Hamel moves to spend up to $50,000 drilling two wells to service the Robbie Mills Sports Complex with the money to be taken out of the capital reserve account.
Non-capital reserve.
The non-capital reserve. Thank you. Is there a second for that? Councilor Bullock seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Councilor Bowles, you look like you're in labor over there.
I'm reading the timeline for a special election. I'm trying to move the agenda.
All those in favor, raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion regarding a request to the governor and executive council to hold a special election for the vacancy in the House of Representatives for the seat shared with the town of Belmont. As you all know, Representative Fisher, who represents... Who holds... Held that seat up until last week, resigned. And we have one more year to go in this session of the legislature, which will again meet starting next January. And so what's before us tonight is a proposal that we have to share with Belmont to schedule a special election to fill that seat for the 2018 legislative session. Such said election to run concurrently with our normal municipal election in November. Councilor Bear?
Can I ask why we're not getting or having an election for two seats?
That's a good question, and the answer is that she's speaking about...
Frank Tilton.
Representative or former Representative Tilton, who was never sworn in after he was elected in November of last year for this term. But he has notified the city manager that he is recovering from his illness and that he plans to be in the legislature in January.
Good.
So that's...
Happy to hear that, yeah.
Otherwise, we would... If he resigned, we would be electing two people. So this is obviously contingent upon Belmont doing the same thing.
Upon further review, it's not. It actually just went on in Ashland and Bristol, and Ashland wanted to fill the seat and Bristol didn't. But the request upon behalf of Ashland went before the governor or council. I can't tell you 100 percent. I don't know if the votes happened yet or it's pending. But I can't imagine the executive council would reject the request for an election and deny Ashland their representation. And if the election is ordered, Bristol will need to go ahead and have it anyway. The reason we're bringing it to you on a very short timeframe is we need to submit this to governor and council no later than June 5 in order to get on the June 21 governor and council meeting. That allows us to set up the timeframe, and we can hold the primary when we're holding our local primary and hold the general election for the state seat when we're holding our municipal general election in November. So the vote tonight is important in order to get it to governor and council by June 5.
Any further discussion?
We're going to have somebody run.
Okay. Motion being ordered to request the governor and executive council to declare a special election as outlined in RSA 661:8, and to further request that this election be held to coincide with the city election cycle, with the primary election being held on September 12, 2017, and the general election on November 7, 2008, 2017 also. Councilor Bullock makes that motion. Councilor Bear seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, that motion carries.
And I believe Belmont is going to address this with their select board tomorrow, so we will have a...
Because they'll have to hold... They'll have to go to the expense of having a special election.
Yes, they will. But they may only have one polling place, where we have six polling places, places, which would be a lot more expensive to open if we didn't time it up with our municipal elections.
Yeah, we have a regular election.
Okay. The last item on the agenda under new business is a general budget discussion on priorities, policies, and an update on the state budget. What a great hour for that.
You've got 10 minutes, Henry.
I think we should pass on that and do it at the next...
I moved the table.
The whole point was...
Besides, we'll be in a lot better shape to discuss this on June 5 through June 19.
So anybody object to postponing that discussion?
Hell, yeah.
All right. So we'll just ask that that be put on a...
It's too late.
Just ask that be put out on a future budget or future agenda. All right. We have no unfinished business tonight, no nominations or elections. Council comments? I dare any council.
Just for that.
Okay. We have no need for a non-public session tonight, but we do have a need for a brief non-meeting to discuss contract, labor contract negotiations. And so I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn in a moment, and just for the advice of the audience, note that we will have to clear the room for our so-called non-meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Counselor Bowens moves to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Bear. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, and we are adjourned at 6:34.
6:34? He's tired.
10:34. I'm on Alaskan time.
Alaskan? Oh, where, is that where you were? I hear you went to Texas again, huh?
He's still there.